Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting with the Halden Catholic Sixth School Board on Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, I would like to recognize and thank the staff and students of our board, who put so much effort into observing the season of Lent and celebrating Holy Week last week. Both individual classrooms and whole school initiatives enabled our students to experience the meaningful Lenten experience with an emphasis on prayer and supporting others in the community. Tonight, we have most trustees attending in person with a few participating remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the chat box only and type "hand up" only to be placed in the queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. For those attending remotely, please remember to turn on your microphone and your camera when you are recognized to speak only. Turn off your camera and mic otherwise. The chat box is not the official communication channel for the public listening in. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the flow, your mic will be muted. Moving on to the first order of business, which is land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halden, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Omnivores.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
You're muted, Mr. Chair.
Please join me in the sound of faith.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Please join me in the sound of faith in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from it. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Please rise for the national anthem and the oath of citizenship.
Moving on to the next order of business, which is motions adopted in camera. There are none. Information received in camera? There's no information received in camera. The next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
And seconded, O'Brien.
Moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee O'Brien. I shall now, uh, I shall now take this to a recorded vote. So we are, we are voting on approving the agenda. Trustee Ohonchenada? Trustee Ohonchenada is not present as yet. Uh, Trustee Guzo? Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Yantamasi? Trustee Yantamasi? Trustee Yantamasi? Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor. Trustee Yantamasi's response, his vote is in the chat box.
Trustee Carabella, I'm in the middle of a vote. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Boy? Trustee Masriyamer? Trustee Tokiva?
In favor.
Trustee Ohonchenada? Trustee Ohonchenada? Okay, so we have, we have six in favor, none opposed, and not no extensions. The motion carries, the agenda is approved. Moving on, next order of business, uh, that's declarations of conflict of interest.
A point of order, or a point of privilege, or a point of order? I'm not sure, Mr. Chair. Just for, for clarification, uh, Trustee Yantamasi has technical difficulties, and his vote is quite clear in the chat box.
Thank you, Trustee.
Okay.
It's not a point of privilege because that's not really affecting, uh, the trustee, number one. Uh, number three, uh, the Education Act, as far as digital attendance by trustees, is very clear about how trustees should participate, and I've sent an email to all trustees and the options available to trustees. So I'm hoping that trustees take advantage of the available resources that this large board has. Thank you for bringing it up.
Make a suggestion, Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, we do not have your hand up in the chat box, so I'm moving forward at the next item, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Trustee DeRosa, you hand up for the declarations of conflict of interest?
No, I have a hand up, I have a hand up for a suggestion I wanted to make.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm taking suggestions for declarations of conflict of interest only. Do you have any declarations of conflict of interest tonight?
Yeah, that's not a suggestion. I don't have any, any conflict of interest.
Trustee DeRosa, I do not hear the declarations of conflict of interest, so I shall move on to the next order of business, which is presentations. The first. Director Daley, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Please, tonight, to, uh, ask Superintendent Nar to speak to a really unique great example of a school, community, cross-curricular endeavor. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Nar.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this evening, I am pleased to share with you, uh, a report.
Superintendent Nar, can you hear me? Just doing a.
Try something else, is this better?
Sorry, sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, it, audio is clear, so all trustees can hear you. Thank you, go ahead, please. Sorry, I dropped.
No worries. Uh, so, uh, as Director Daley said, very pleased to share this, uh, project with you this evening. I believe Mrs. Di Pietro is going to move the slides. Thank you. So, um, the project, uh, that's been taking place at secondary, at Notre Dame Catholic Secondary School, has been in partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the Chipewas of the Nowash Unseated First Nations Community. If we could move to the slide. The Tiny Home Pilot Project is a collaborative partnership that focuses on the ultimate goal of helping to build a world where everyone has a decent place to live, and in doing so, provides our students with hands-on building experience to contribute to providing housing for opt, housing options for those who are in need. The Notre Dame Project will provide the Chipewas of Nowash Unseated First Nations two completed tiny homes this summer that are being built by the students in the construction classes and as well the students in the Construction Club that takes place after school at Notre Dame. A tiny home is a living space that is under five hundred square feet. Uh, the tiny home is built to be eco-friendly, able to exist off the grid, taps into existing infrastructure, and adds density and diversity into a neighborhood. And when you see the insides of the homes, they're quite nice to look at, both on the inside and the outside, but, um, when they are finished, they have, uh, a place for sleeping, a washroom, a kitchenette, uh, some seating areas, good windows, and, um, they're quite nice inside. So this project has allowed the students in our construction classes at Notre Dame and as well the Construction Club to, uh, gain hands-on experience in housing construction. When I visited the classes and spoke with the students, they were really excited to tell me about the things that they learned to do. Some even commented on realizing how important math is as they had to rely on math skills to, uh, make cuts and make sure the angles for the trim and everything were, were good. Um, they talked a lot about, uh, the things that they learned to do, uh, putting floors in, putting the wiring in, uh, and they also shared the fact that, well, they hadn't decided whether they were going to go into construction later on. They were really happy to know that when they get their own home eventually, that they'll be able to do some of their own home renovations and fix-ups around the house and, and lay floors and such. Um, Habitat for Humanity also provided a civil engineer who was on site to support the construction and ensure that, uh, things were being done in ways that would meet all inspection standards. Uh, the students also gained an appreciation, uh, in understanding that this home would be helping others in need and certainly making connections to our Catholic social teachings, specifically those around global solidarity and care for the community and common good. As well, knowing that Indigenous people have deep spiritual, physical, social, and cultural connections to their land, this partnership allows for that housing to be provided on their land. Um, it was very moving when one of the, um, members of the Chipewa Nation, Shane Chigano, had come to visit the students and said to them how important this would be for the people that were going to live in the home, but also said to them that this was really truth and reconciliation in action. It was quite moving to hear that, and you could see that in the, the students as well. And here's a couple of comments that, uh, some of our students have, have said about, uh, being involved in the project. Meeting the chief of Chipewas of Nowash Unseated Nation, First Nations Community was emotional and helped me realize I was making a difference, and it was cool working with power tools. Another student said that it was awesome knowing that my hard work was making a difference and to see how many people could come together on this project. So in partnership with the Chipewas of the Nowash Unseated First Nation and with Habitat for Humanity in Great Bruce, these new tiny homes will be relocated to the community and will provide some housing solutions to assist the community with providing emergency shelter or transitional housing. Once the homes arrive up in the nations, they will facilitate the cover of the costs, the, and cover the cost of, um, final site servicing and the requirements for each, um, unit. So that's part of the partnership. The Chipewas will, will make sure that the site servicing is done up there. And, uh, here's a couple of pictures, sort of the, the start to, to almost completion of, of the homes that are going on at Notre Dame. Uh, it started in October of twenty twenty-one. Habitat for Humanity had reached out to Notre Dame and to the construction teacher, Al Nason, uh, to see if they could assist with building the tiny home that was part of this partnership. Um, we ended up with two homes at Notre Dame. One came partially finished, uh, one was, uh, a little less farther along. Um, these homes are going to be moved up to the Chipewas Nation this summer, and the plan is to continue the partnership, uh, for the coming year to build one. I think they really are hoping to build two next year. We've agreed to, to do up to two homes, so that will start, uh, after these homes move out, uh, over the course of this summer. Uh, on April the eighth, we are fortunate to have Chief Veronica Smith, along with Shane Chigano, who's a board member for Habitat for Humanity and as well a member of the Chipewa Community, and a counselor from the Chipewa Community, Norma Toby, uh, who oversees the housing lands and the membership for Habitat in the Great Bruce area, which is where these will be, uh, and along with, uh, so those are the three that you see in the image there as well. They had Greg Fryer, who is a chief executive officer up in the, uh, the community. Uh, they came out to see the tiny home and talk to the students. I think it was a great experience for the students. And you can see here that, um, one of our students pictured on the, I think it's my right anyway, I'm assuming it's your right, uh, she painted a picture and offered that as a gift for, uh, Chief Smith to take back to, uh, to her community. So, and Chief Smith was quite moved with that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Nar, for presenting this awesome project. So I will now turn the floor over to trustees, if they have any comments or suggestions. Trustees, uh, Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Great, uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, a personal comment. I actually know a number of the students who worked on those projects, and, um, they're just friends of the family, or friends of my, of my sons, and they absolutely loved it. They loved the experience, um, and what they loved the most about it was this whole concept of giving back, that they were creating these new opportunities. So yes, they got to use their hands, and they got to see the product of, you know, their hard work, but, um, really, the conversations around the dinner table were where these houses were going and who was going to live in them and what that meant for the community. And all of those pieces, um, that came, you know, in addition to power tools and, you know, those other pieces. And so, you know, that, to me, is just, it's just so truly indicative of what you want to see from a project like that. You know, they're learning practical skills, they're getting credits for it, but man, look at what they're producing. I, I think it's a wonderful initiative, and I'm so proud that we're a part of it. So just a comment to that, to that fact.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Next on speakers list is Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella with your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I as well want to commend everyone with this project. It's, um, absolutely fabulous and so meaningful on so many levels, and I'm so glad that, um, we were approached and could do it, and everyone was on board, and it's just so successful. I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, Trustee Murphy, and then Trustee Masriyamer. Trustee Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, that was me again. After three years, I'll, I'll get the hang of this, don't worry about it. Uh, thank you, Superintendent Nar, that was a great presentation. Uh, it's great when we can see those practical applications of knowledge and, and the key also is building connections with community, right? And that's where we develop our, our higher senses of empathy, and, and that's where we make changes. Uh, is this something that we can roll out to other high schools? Has there been interest in other high schools? Or are there other, uh, in our, our relationship with Habitat for Humanity? Is there possibility of rolling it out to other high schools?
Uh, Superintendent Nar, we need some in Halden.
Okay. Um, certainly, I mean, um, it would, it would mean going to high schools where there's, um, the construction classes. I know that Habitat is interested in expanding, um, and, you know, would be open to that. I think they always have to make sure as well that places are able to receive the homes that, that they build, but, uh, in partnership with us. But I know that they're open to expanding and, and hoping to do so. Uh, I believe the construction teacher at Corpus Christi is actually going to help on some of the, um, final cabinetry finishing on the one home before it leaves as well.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you. Uh, next we have, uh, Trustee Masriyamer, and then Trustee DeRosa. Trustee Masriyamer?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I had a similar question to Trustee Murphy's, but a little bit to expand on it. Is there any way we can not necessarily do tiny homes, but other type of appliances for the houses or things like tables and chairs that we can expand on?
Superintendent Nar?
That's a good question. Um, I don't honestly know the answer to that. Um, you know, on, on this current pilot project, the lead is Habitat for Humanity. So we take the lead, um, in their partnership that they have with the First Nations Community to see what it is that they want or need for their community, but I can certainly pose that when, uh, when we see them next. So great question, thank you.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead, Trustee Masriyamer.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. And I was also wondering when the homes are being delivered. I know that the organization does it themselves, but would it be in the future, any opportunity for students to join on that? Because I think it would be really inspirational to see where their home ends up and to see kind of full circle moment of how it happened.
Superintendent Nar?
Thank you. Uh, yes, we, um, we have had a conversation about, um, having a bit of a ceremony when, when the home is going to be moved. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure if the chief will be able to come back down for that, but certainly we are planning on doing something. Uh, we're also working with Sherri Seville, um, because we would like to, um, certainly send off the home with some kind of a blessing and well wishes that would go to the home, and we've asked that they send us back some stories, if possible, of the people that, um, you know, if they want to send some messages or stories back to the school once, um, people have moved into that home. Uh, the chief has invited our students to come up at any point in time. She's sort of given them an open-ended invitation to come up, uh, and, and see where the homes will go. Uh, so we'll be in conversation about how we can try and do that connection, if it's not this summer, at least at some point in time, to, to where the homes are going. Um, but we are in conversation about, um, trying to do something along that lines. Yes.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Superintendent Nar, um, very simply, congratulations on a wonderful program. I don't know the possibilities or the intentions or the plans to take it somewhere else, but I have fairly senior contact in the local organization here. If there's an, any way I can help, just give me a call. Okay?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Trustee DeRosa, and since we do not have any other speakers here, I just want to pass the message, uh, to, through Director Daley, to Superintendent Nar, to our students and staff, that this is a wonderful program, uh, which teaches our students not only the curriculum, but also what's out there in the real world. Keep up the good work and well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, the next order of business, which is delegations. We do not have delegations tonight, so we move on to the next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Uh, minute, the minutes of the April fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular board meeting is in your package. Are there any additions, errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular board meeting?
Approved, O'Brien.
Moved by Trustee O'Brien. Lead a second, uh, please. Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. I shall take it to a recorded vote. Vice Chair Agnew?
Uh, I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm staying.
Trustee Yantamasi? Trustee Yantamasi? Trustee Yantamasi? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Boy? Trustee Boy is, uh, not joining as yet. Okay, Trustee Masriyamer? Trustee Tokiva?
In favor.
Trustee Ohonchenada? Not joining? Uh, Trustee Guzo? So we have, we have five in favor, none opposed, one abstained. The motion carries, the minutes have been approved. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is business arising from previous meetings. The summary of outstanding items from previous meetings, uh, the chart is in your package, which is provided. Are there, do trustees have any questions here? Trustee Guzo, I see your hand up. Trustee Guzo? Trustee Guzo, I see your hand up. Trustee Guzo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Can I just get an, an update on the, the Black Student Unions in schools? I know it says it's, it's ongoing, but if I can just ask?
Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. I'll pass it to Director Daly.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I'll, I'll include it in the, the update on the weekend.
Thank you. Trustees, any more questions on the outstanding items from previous meetings? Seeing, seeing none, we shall move on to the next order of business, which is action items. Item 8.1, School Liaison Officer Program in HCSB schools. Director Daly, would you like to speak to the report if I read the motion? Director Daly?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of the report is to provide additional information to the board regarding the school liaison officer program. And I've also offered some recommendations for trustee consideration going forward. The attached report includes both the survey and focus group data that was collected in February and March of this school year. The recommendations that are offered come from a consideration based around the findings in these reports. I think it's worth noting that while the recommendations speak to, I guess I would say, the bulk of the responses, I think it's clear that they also don't reflect all of the feedback that we've heard, either through the survey or in some feedback that I've received from some parents and community groups in, in meetings outside of, outside of this process. I do want to thank the research staff for working through the survey, the focus groups that were conducted with students and community groups. I know that Dr. Colomore is here tonight to answer any questions that might be specific to the methodology or the survey itself. But I do offer a few recommendations again, based on, on, on the results of the survey that are for trustee deliberation and consideration. So I'm happy to answer any questions either about recommendations or we're happy to answer questions about the report itself.
Thank you, Director Daly. Before I read the motions, would Dr. Colomore like, like add anything to this? Dr. Colomore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, nothing else to add.
Thank you. So I should get the motions, get it moved and seconded, and then we'll take questions, Director Daly, okay? Be resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board lift the pause on school liaison officer program offered at HCSB schools. Be further resolved that staff share this report with the Holden Regional Police Services. Be further resolved that staff implement a process for collection of data on an ongoing basis to identify the nature and frequency of SLO calls to school. Be further resolved that staff implement a regular schedule of consultation to solicit feedback from students, families, staff, community members, and HRPS to help ensure the SLO program is meeting the needs of our community and continues to fulfill its mandate with HCSB.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien.
I have a point of order, if you'll permit me.
Okay, I shall state a point of order, please.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, this is not the whole motion, it's only the first part of the motion. I'm wondering if the first part of the motion is in order and if you'll allow me to explain.
Go ahead, Trustee.
Mr. Chair, I do have the original motion. Show my camera on. Which was passed a few months ago and it reads as follows, number 13 slash 22. Be it resolved that the Director of Education directs staff to pause the school resource officer program until such time as information forms can be held with community groups, racialized parents, students, police services, and staff on the program and its effectiveness in schools by April 2022. At this time, it shall be brought back to the board for further review. My point of order is, according to this motion, the way it's worded, it seems to me that if all of these qualifications are met, then the pause is over. At least that's how I would read it. If you'd just permit me.
Yeah, go ahead.
The first part of the motion tonight says that it will lift the pause. So I, my point of order is if everything is done tonight, finished tonight, and according to this motion, which we did pass, pause will be over. I just want to move on, so it's technically completely correct.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. You have stated your point of order. However, a point of order is usually when a parliamentary procedure or a procedure is broken. So I'm not really seeing where a parliamentary process or a procedure is broken. You're talking about a motion, which is something different, and whether the motion is satisfied. That's different from a process or a procedure which, which is a point of order. So I don't, my ruling would be a point of order is not in order, it's not valid. And so you have an option to appeal that or we move on.
Mr. Chair, knowing for a while that your office, I deeply respect and that you do often seek wisdom where wisdom is needed in your greatest humility. Could we obtain a parliamentary opinion on this?
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Wait a minute, my point of order needs to be addressed first.
He did. He, he addressed it. He said it's not an order.
I think I asked him.
I've ruled on a parliamentary order, on your point of order. You asked for a parliamentary opinion, which, which I will consider, but we have a point of order. I'll get back to you.
All right.
Trustee Guzo, your point of order?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. You've already, as you just clarified, you've already ruled on the point of order. I would suggest that we move on. The other option is for an appeal to be filed.
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. It does not hurt to get the parliamentary opinion. So I'll give it a little, since you have parliamentary in Kapoor, online, parliamentary in Kapoor. I have ruled that that point of order is not really valid for the simple reason it does not break any of our parliamentary procedures. Could you advise me on this?
I, if I understand, good evening, Chair. If I understand Trustee O'Brien's point of order correctly, I, I agree with you that, that there is no, that, that is not, there's not a conflict or that, that first part of the motion is not, is not unnecessary. So I do, I do agree with the opinion that you gave, with the ruling that you made. Sorry, Chair.
You, Trustee O'Brien, my ruling stands. The option only is to appeal it. And your point of order is ruled on too. So.
Mr. Chair, I will appeal it.
Okay.
With all due respect.
Thank you. No problem. So, Trustee O'Brien, you appealed the ruling of the chair. So you lead a seconder?
Carabella?
Trustee Carabella? There is no discussion or debate on this. Trustee Ohonchenota, do you, how do you vote? Do you vote in favor of the appeal?
I'll vote opposed, please. Thank you.
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Boy?
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiva?
Opposed.
So we have three in favor. We have four opposed. The appeal fails.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the parliamentary opinion.
You're welcome. Moving on, back to the motion. I was reading the motion. Now, I will ask, before I ask for a seconder, a mover and a seconder, I would like to remind trustees that this discussion is of a sensitive nature and there'll be zero tolerance for any racial derogatory or discriminatory comments during this discussion. Actually, I should not be reminding trustees. It should be a given. But it's just plain and human decency that we should have this good discussion. And unfortunately, if I have to invoke the trustee code of conduct, I will. So moving on, I'd like to have a mover for this motion.
I'll move.
Trustee De Rosa moves?
Yep.
Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. I'm looking for a seconder?
Carabella?
I shall now turn up the floor to trustees for discussions. Please put hand up in the chat box if you'd like to talk to this motion. Okay, we have a speakers list. Trustee Guzo, then Trustee Vice Chair Agnew. Okay, Vice, Trustee Guzo, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I'm assuming you'll, you'll direct this comment, but I'm gonna, I'm hoping that it from scientific statistic point of view from staff. If they were, if you were able to identify if staff were actually utilizing the program for what it was meant to be based on the answers and the statistics that were received.
Thank you. I'll pass this on to Dr. Colomore. Dr. Colomore, you have the floor.
Hello. Good evening. And through you. Thanks for the question, Trustee Guzo. It was a little bit choppy, so I don't know that I caught all of it, but you were asking about the staff survey respondents?
Hi. Is this better? Can you hear me better now?
Yes, I can. Yep.
But help if I actually turned it to the mic. I was asking if you were able to, what you collect, sorry. Off their mics because it's giving feedback.
Point of privilege, is it?
Yes, please.
Turn off your mics. We can hear some people dusting the, thank you.
I'm sorry, for if the staff were actually utilizing the program for what its mandate called for.
Dr. Colomore?
So through you, Doc, Mr. Chair. We did ask staff on the survey various questions about, you know, views of the school liaison officer's role. And the options that were included in the survey were taken from the protocol that's used. So we didn't ask about every single mandated bit of the SLO officer, but things like, you know, does the SLO develop opportunities to build positive relationships with youth? Do they assist in the developments of young people's understanding of good stewardship? So all of those options that were presented to staff are taken directly from the protocol. And as the protocol reads, those things are the things that are required in order for the program to meet its mandate. So he's also here on the line. I'm not sure if she has anything else to add. But I think that answers what you were asking about the staff survey specifically.
I'll be waiting, Dr. Colomore, for anybody to add something? Did you mention about who's going to add something? Dr. Colomore?
Oh, I, I just said that. My, my colleague Zoe Walters is also on the line. So I'm not sure if she has anything else to add, but I'm pretty sure that answered that question.
I don't, Lisa. You, you answered it.
Thank you. Trustee Guzo, do you have a follow-up?
Sorry. So just to, just to clarify, so the answers did reflect the, the mandate before I have my follow-up. So, so the questions were reflective of what the program is actually mandated to do. And it wasn't just an answer, a simple yes or no, but even the responses.
Correct. So, so that particular question, the respondents were to check all that applied to them and from their perspective of the SLO program. So, so for example, develops opportunities to build positive relationships with youth. Seventy-three percent of the staff respondents said that yes, that's what the SLO officer did.
Guzo, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So my question, my next question is from, in regards to a statistical point of, point, again, coming from, from the survey specifically. Would you say that you were able to determine whether or not the program was well-understood? Whether it be through students, staff, and parents?
Dr. Colomore, go ahead.
So, so through you, Mr. Chair. So as, as I mentioned in several parts of the report, we did ask all the, all the stakeholders about their familiarity with the program. And so generally, generally, overall, most of the stakeholders that responded to the survey specifically, lots of them said that they were unfamiliar or they didn't have any familiarity with the SLO program. So there, so there's that. And then of the people who said, yes, I'm familiar with the program, they were really only slightly familiar. I would say the staff group, particularly the school administrators, were probably the ones with the most familiarity in terms of their level. They were at the quite too extreme level. So, you know, we provided that information so you can really understand some of the numbers that you're seeing. You kind of have to take that into consideration that most of our respondents on the survey said that they were only slightly familiar or moderately familiar with the program. And I would say that throughout the report, we've highlighted areas in the text where there are some patterns that are different, that are significant. So that's what that writing or that summary is throughout the report.
Thank you, Dr. Colomore. We will move down, we will move down the speakers list. On speakers list, we have Vice Chair Agnew, Trustee De Rosa, Trustee Ohonchenota, Trustee Boy, and Trustee O'Brien. Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I know there will be a lot of questions that will come out tonight, but I, I do want to take this opportunity to just have some commentary and share some thoughts that I had on this process and seeing this report. And I'm just going to put them out there for what it's worth. So I'm glad we undertook this process. I think it was very valuable. I think it was a good exercise that we did this. And I'm glad to see that we did have some responses back. It gave us some information to take a look at and some things to sort of further reflect on. What, and, and I know that this wasn't the nature of the motion, but there was a few things that I struggled with when I did see the report. And I understand that the overall big picture of the results were that it is positive and it is doing work. And I'm really pleased to see that from a staff perspective, they're benefiting from the program. And it's helpful for them and that's really important. And I don't want to discount any of the positive aspects of this report. I do, however, it is disheartening that there are students who are possibly being negatively impacted by this program. And that could be for a variety of different reasons. It's also a little bit unfortunate that there were so many people who were not aware of the program. I think that that is, personally, I think that that's a bit of a concern, that people are not more aware of this program. And perhaps we need to do a better job letting families and students and whoever that might be, our stakeholders, know that this program is in the school and what the program is actually working to accomplish. So having said all of that, you know, I, I would like to see, and I don't know where this place is going to be, but I would like to see there be some steps taken to address some of the issues that I think are not being addressed and some things we may have seen come out of the report. And so, you know, if this was me and I was running a program, I would want to know that that program was benefiting the majority of stakeholders for which that program was meant to impact. And if I had an inclination that even a handful of students were being negatively impacted, I would not be able to sleep. I would want to know why that was. I would want to dig down and understand what it was that was negatively impacting those stakeholders. And I think that that has to be done. I think that, I believe that for this program to be truly valuable for everybody involved, that there has to be some additional work done to identify those gaps, to figure out. that there has to be some additional work done to identify those gaps, to figure out where those miscommunications are, to figure out why there is a negative perception and what that perception is and why that perception exists and what could be done to try to fix that perception. If I thought someone didn't like me and I thought someone didn't like my program, you better believe I'd be doing what I could to make sure that they did like it and they were happy and I would want to do that. And especially given that we have seen other boards across our province either pause this program indefinitely or cancel this program. I think that needs to be able to wake up sign, a wake up signal, that there is probably some work that has to be done with this program. Should we see this program continue or be unpaused? So, you know, I want to put that out there sort of for thought. And again, if, you know, if I'm the this program has also never been reviewed. That's a challenge to me, that this program has never been reviewed. And so when we look ahead and we look at what the possibility might be for this program, I really do truly think that we need to take a look at why it hasn't been reviewed, that it continue to be reviewed, what that would look like, the number of other factors. And again, I want to be sure that we have a program in our schools that is beneficial to all parties, that all stakeholders benefit positively from that or as much as possible. And if there are gaps that exist and if there are issues and there are cracks, they have to be addressed and they have to be fixed in order for this program to move forward and do what it says it's doing in our schools. So I don't have all the answers to that and I'm hoping the conversations tonight might flush that out. But I do think it's really important that we not dismiss that there was some negative aspects to this program that were identified in that survey and we have heard from community groups to the same. And we can't discount their voices either. So just my thoughts for what they're worth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, vice chair Agnew. On the speakers list, we have trustee De Rosa, trustee Ojhanana and trustee Bowie next. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Dr. Collimer. And if you'll allow me, I have a few comments to make, just like my colleague. My first question is, I think we have to have a realization that there are certain members of staff who are predisposed because of the nature of the program to work a lot closer with the SLOs than other staff. And I would suggest to you that the vice principals have an intimate knowledge of who the participants in the program are. They work with them every day. And they would, they are certainly, we have certainly less vice principals in the schools than staff. So I think it's a little bit dangerous to look at the response rate strictly, strictly on the basis of of who responded and how many responded. The more appropriate way to look at this, in my view, is to look at who is actually working the closest with with these individuals. And I would suggest to you that the principal and the vice principals, particularly the vice principals, would be intimately aware of what the program is. With respect to my colleague's suggestion that this program should be reviewed, I have absolutely no objection to that whatsoever because I think anything that is reviewed and re-questioned throughout the process produces better results in the long run. What I don't, what I have objection to is the fact that we've decided to suspend a program that we really haven't before we've actually attempted to actually review it and question it. I think the usefulness of these programs or of this program in respect to its contribution to school life, in respect to the contribution into into the safety of school life, I think is invaluable to suspend it while we wait for, to iron out some of the things that should be ironed out. I can't, I can't bear to take away the image in my head that we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater. And I'm, I would caution us, I would caution my colleagues from doing that. The other thing that I would remark, I think there's some parallels that have been drawn with respect to the program in high school versus a program in elementary school. I would suggest to you that although they are closely related to each other, the programs, the nature of the programs in elementary and the nature of the programs in high school are completely different. In elementary school, I think it's more of an education program. It's more of, I forget the acronym that was used in the past, certainly my kids have gone through it. I believe it was the DARE program that's part of this. I may be wrong. But in high school, these same individuals are engaged with the staff and with with the student, the student body in a much different, much different way. So to draw a parallel between the two or to try to segregate them, I don't think would give it justice. So my concern about this is not the review, is not to put the program under scrutiny. My concern is that we suspended waiting for some magic result or magic solution somewhere down the road. And I will, I will support this motion on that basis. Thank you.
Ojhanana, you have the floor, sorry, the mic was off.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can read lips. Thank you through you to, I guess, Director Daley as per the motion. So I'd like to bring everyone's attention to the be it resolved, the fourth one, where it states that staff implement a regular schedule of consultation to solicit feedback from students, families, staff, community members and the HRPS. So I guess my question would be, Director Daley, what would be that mechanism that would be used to gather this feedback per this further resolved statement?
Director Daley?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. To be honest, trustee, I'd be looking for some from trustees, what they would think is appropriate. I think the process that we just went through can be valuable. It's, you know, labor intensive to survey, you know, over a thousand people. But that's one, one option. I think feedback in the form of focus groups or focused conversations with students, with community groups, with families could be a way to do it. You know, when we look at school climate surveys, we do that every two years. I'm not sure if that's sufficient, but would certainly welcome suggestions from trustees as to what they might want to see in that consultation process, the frequency of it and then how it would be reported back to the board as well.
Thank you. Trustee Ojhanana, do you have a follow up?
I do, and thank you, Director Daley. And I guess my second question would be in regards to the statement, the, how it meets the needs. So again, how would we translate that statement of meeting the needs? How do we gauge that? And I'm really asking a very honest question. How would we gauge that it's a successful program moving forward? What's your thoughts on that?
Again, and thank you for the question through you, Mr. Chair. I think it's, maybe my thoughts there were probably more around trying to assess whether or not it's fulfilling its mandate. And that's, that's not an easy thing to do, as some trustees have noted already. But I think if the, if the questions aren't asked, then we're not going to get the answers or the feedback either. So I think I would probably focus more on what the mandate is of the program going forward. And that might lead to some changes in what we think the mandate should be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind trustees to use the chat box for hand up only. It's becoming difficult for me to maintain the speakers list as it clutters the whole chat box and makes the meeting inefficient. Thank you, trustees. On the speakers list, we have trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
You so much, Mr. Chair and through you. So my first question goes to either Director Daley or Dr. Collimer, whoever is interested in answering. But I know that one thing that we learned when talking to our student stakeholders on Senate about the SLO program is that the vast majority of our students were not made aware of the program and had not interacted with SLO officers, either in elementary school or in secondary school. So I was wondering if the results of this report were going to be used by staff at the board to perhaps inform our plans for the program moving forward. And if there's anything that's going to be done behind the scenes, perhaps to increase student awareness of the program and perhaps change the way in which our SLO officers interact with students.
Director Daley?
Sorry about that. I, I think it speaks somewhat, I think, to a point that trustee Agnew raised. Now that we have some feedback, it does beg further questions. So I think it's a fair question to say if the program is not, or the perception of program is it's not well known or people are uncertain as to what point or the mandate of the program is. I think that naturally generates some questions. And I, I could hazard guesses at why those responses might be those responses, but that would just be my opinion. So I don't think, I would, I don't think I'd be in a position to offer that. But I think it's worth, I think it's worth some examining in greater detail.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Bowie, do you have a follow up?
I do, thank you. It's a different question. So perhaps to our lovely data collection team. So I know that this motion talks about ongoing collection of data to identify SLO calls and to ensure that the program is meeting the needs of our community. I was wondering perhaps, so if we are doing this ongoing data collection, which I think is a good idea, is there any metric perhaps that we can add to the motion for the program to come under review of the board every couple or so years? Or is this just going to be data that's collected by the board to inform the program? Is this something that we could implement a review cycle for us to review the data collected throughout a period of time? And then it comes back to the board for the decision in the future?
Director Daley?
Thank you. Maybe I'll ask Dr. Collimer to comment because now I forgot what the question was.
Dr. Collimer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question, trustee Bowie. Sorry, can you just repeat it? I think I heard you saying could we add a metric to the resolution? Or?
Could you repeat the question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So something like, perhaps, ongoing data collection. And I just find myself thinking, so if we're collecting this data, then what are we going to do with it, right? So I'm thinking that perhaps it might be a good idea to ensure that this program continues to benefit students and the ones seen through the data that we've seen through this period, which I think was incredibly valuable. Is there a way for us to add perhaps to the motion, say the program comes under review every couple or so years, whatever you guys think is feasible and appropriate, given how difficult it is to collect this data? But implement a review cycle so that this comes back to the board every couple of years so that it's continually under review?
Dr. Collimer, would you like to answer that? We have Director Daley here.
I mean, I think this is kind of going along some of the conversation that Director Daley has answered before when a similar question was asked about the fourth be it resolved. So if it was the wish of the board, I think the board would help determine, you know, what that monitoring process looked like and what measures would be used moving forward.
Thank you. Do you have a clarification question or you tried to, okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Bowie. On the speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien. I shall go to the speakers. We have not spoken first and then come back to trustees who have spoken. So trustee O'Brien and trustee Murphy. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dr. Collimer. Again, an excellent analysis of both qualitative and quantitative data, not an easy thing to juggle. Now, originally, I was one of the persons that did vote against the pause. But I can see now how this pause, it's been a very good reflective action. We've hurt our students. Couple of takeaways for me. It was interesting that most students were in grade seven and eight that responded. And I'm also amazed at how close the responses were between the racialized and the non-racialized, how they were similar. For example, it's a good idea for halt and police to assign officers to schools. Eighty-six of the racialized percent and non-racialized, non-racialized ninety-three percent, very similar. Also, the fact that most parents, guardians and staff respondents agreed that having the SLO program makes them feel safe at school. Good takeaway for me too. I will support this. I like especially the fourth be it further resolved. It seems there's an awareness of the staff that the ongoing collection of data is important, not just at one time. And I fully am confident the staff will do what they need with the data in order to make the program workable and meet the needs of our students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. On the speakers list, we have trustee Murphy and then trustee Carabella. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see this as a case of some missed opportunity. Currently, as the program is and potentially how it gets reinstated. So we have a well-intentioned program that, that there are people that value. Through our survey results, we've been able to determine that it creates feelings of fear with some students, parents and community members. So if we reinstate the program as it is without addressing those fears, without understanding the triggers that create those fears, we're basically discounting or ignoring those fears, which, which is not acceptable. That's not who we are. That's not equity. You know, conversely, if we say, okay, well then, then let's pause the program or shelve the program, then there's missed opportunity in the value that it brings. And I think there's missed opportunity in the interactions and connections that can be formed. The reality is, is in our society, there are, there are police forces and throughout our lives, we may interact with them. And I see this as a real opportunity to form, to have contact. And if we can have multiple contact in positive ways, the more often you can repeat that engagement will build connections. Those connections will build empathy between the police that interact between the students. And then we have some opportunity for some real change. So I think we need to, to take a look at the program and modify it so we can be very specific on the actions that will produce these multiple positive contacts and build these connections. Then hopefully, maybe this is naive, but my hope is that it would help dissipate some of those fears and we would get the benefit in our school community and our community at large. So I think we need to, to have a solution where we address those fears that have been identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, once again, trustees, I have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, just before this motion started, that the chat box will be used for the purpose it is intended to. I see trustee Yantamasi passing comments there. And, and I would like to say right now that if we continue with this route, I will have to invoke the trustee code of conduct at this point in time or in future. And let me, let me be very clear about it. I'd like to have an efficient meeting and I'd like all trustees to participate in the meeting by using the chat box to type hand up only. I hope trustees understand this message very clearly. We shall move on down the speakers list. Thank you, trustee Murphy. On the speakers list, we have trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm very happy with the review and this motion. I will be supporting it. I, I voted against the initial pause as well because I did feel that we could have done this review and still have the benefits of the program. Many of the comments were in favor and, what was I going to say? Many of the comments were in favor and in support of the safety of our schools across the board. Now, there of course Now there of course were comments not to be dismissed that shows some of the weaknesses. And that's what I agree that we can refine, uh, going forward, refine the program to address those weaknesses. But to, uh, keep the program and, you know, it's something that is good and beneficial and we will make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Uh, moving down the speaker list, we have Trustee Guzzo, uh, Trustee Vice Chair Agnew, Trustee De Rosa, and Trustee Ohan Chanada. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question is, is when this report was looked at and this motion was brought forward, what expertise was applied to it in regards to anti-racism and anti-black racism? Like what lens was applied to this motion or, or to the survey results using that lens to come up with this motion? And into who partook in that?
I'll pass this to Director Daily. Director Daily?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I was asked to make recommendations based on the survey results. Uh, I think the recommendations do reflect what we heard back, but noting that certainly there were responses, feelings expressed by students, by some staff, by parents, um, that would see the motions as it stands now and say that we don't think that what we've expressed have been addressed. Uh, I do recognize that. Um, I thought I, I would bring forward recommendations that would reflect what we had heard on a broad basis and hopefully elicit some input from the Board of Trustees as to further refine those recommendations.
Thank you, Director Daily. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow up question?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so going back to the, is it Director Daily, you're, I'm just going back as you mentioned the original motion, which was to, um, pause and until such time information forums can be held community groups, parents and staff on the premise and effectiveness in schools. At this time, it should be brought back to the board for further review. So I don't, I, I, I just, I don't see this motion actually talks about the effectiveness of the program in this school. I also, like, I, I have to ask, so in the one be it further resolved, that staff implement a process for the collection of data on an ongoing basis to identify the nature and frequency of the SLO calls to schools. Is, is there something that staff have, you've discussed with staff in regards to the collection of this data?
Director Daily?
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So that, um, element of the recommendations refers back to, uh, a process that we had suggested we put in place when we first brought the staff report, um, to, to board. And it was, uh, an app that, uh, we, we had developed that schools could use to track, um, the nature and frequency of calls. Uh, we didn't put that process in place during the pause because the nature and frequency of the interaction with the SLO program was paused.
Thank you, Director. Do you have a clarification?
I, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, and that, that's what I wondered is, so, but the app, if, if I'm not mistaken, the app as it was explained, um, at the, at the previous meeting when this was brought up and discussed, the app doesn't actually track, uh, demographics, doesn't track race, it doesn't track the incident, it doesn't track any other resources that could have been brought in as opposed to the SLO program.
Uh, Director Daily?
Uh, that's my understanding as well, that it's limited in terms of what it's tracking. It's really tracking when, uh, officers are called, why they're called and what they're attending to. That's correct.
Thank you, Director Daily. Uh, on the speaker list, Vice Chair Agnew, Trustee De Rosa, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Vice Chair Agnew, you got the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do have a question for the second be it resolved. Uh, so be it for the resolve that staff share the report with the Halton Regional Police Services. And I might, I guess my question around that is, um, uh, you know, um, so what would that look like? Is it just simply sharing the report as is? Would, would it be with an understanding of a, of a, a greater conversation? Would there be, um, some other pieces that go with that? Would there be an expected outcome from sharing that report? So I'm just curious, um, beyond sharing that report, what expectations may come with that particular be it resolved?
Director Daily?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, and all good questions. Technically, it's already been shared with them. It's a public document. They, they can access the board website like anybody else. So, uh, the intent of sharing the report would be to share the report, have conversations with them around what the perceptions and what the feedbacks were, what the feedback we received in the report. And, and hopefully put it in the context if a recommendation comes from the board, to put it in the context of what that recommendation is.
Thank you, Director Daily. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, you have a follow up question? Thank you. Uh, Trustee De Rosa, you're up next. Trustee De Rosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a point of curiosity, maybe for Director Daily can answer the question. Do we have any idea of what, uh, my understanding is that a lot of these officers are already, um, are from a diversity of backgrounds? Do we have any specificity, specificity on, on that? Um, Director Daily?
Point of curiosity, I'm hearing that for the first time, Trustee De Rosa. Okay, I'll get your question answered. Director Daily, do you have information?
Uh, I don't think I would have information to share with, with certainty. I think, uh, I think some trustees have met some of, um, the officers involved in the liaison program, but not, certainly not all.
Uh, Trustee De Rosa, do you have a follow up question?
So, um, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, now I'm, my understanding is that there is, and I believe we've addressed this in the last conversation, but there is a report that is filled out on the cases that come up either by the vice principal or, uh, the officer themselves. Is that not the case?
Director Daily?
Could you maybe, uh, Trustee De Rosa, sorry, could you be a little bit more specific in terms of what you mean by a reporter? In what circumstances a report is filled out?
Well, if there's, uh, if, if there's a particular case with, uh, with an individual or an occurrence that takes place, with a student, um, these occurrences are documented and, and, and recorded and reported. Uh, I, I think there's got to be some, some minimum, um, recording taking place. Is that the case? Maybe not. I don't know.
Director Daily?
Uh, well, certainly in the case of, if it was a, if an occurrence number or an occurrence was attached to a particular call, that would be in, information that the police are required to record by their protocols. We wouldn't have access, uh, to that sort of information at the school level. And again, it, it depends on the nature of the interaction. Certainly, we would have, we would have our own record keeping. But when police are called in, if it's something of potentially of a criminal nature, it's really kind of parallel paths in terms of an investigation as opposed to those paths crossing over. Uh, we try to be, and I think we're successful, uh, at ensuring, um, that information is shared only when it needs to be shared and that it ensures, you know, the, the privacy of, of students and also ensures that we follow, um, the police protocol that we signed on to with, uh, with the regional police.
Thank you.
One more question, Mr. Chair. May I?
Question. Put you in the list if you don't mind, speakers list. Do you be okay with that?
Just a point of clarification and then I may not come back. So, as you wish.
Go ahead. If you have a clarification question, you.
Okay. Well, my point of clarification, uh, was that, again, my understanding was that a lot of the SLOs, I would say all of the SLOs are, are very specially trained individuals to work in the environment that we put them in. Is that correct for the Director Daily? It's not anybody who can come in without training and, and do the job.
Director Daily?
Yeah, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is certainly that it's a position that officers apply to and that the, the police service is, um, very conscious of, of, uh, who they allocate to the schools.
Thank you, Director Daily. Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. I will now move on down the speakers list to Trustee Ohan Chanada. Uh, Trustee Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I, I find myself between a rock and a hard place and I don't like being in this situation because I truly do see the benefits of this program. But at the same time, I'm wrestling with mitigating the risks or the negative, uh, consequences that can come out of this program. So I say to myself, Janet, what can we do? And this may be out of my purview and I apologize if I, I am Director Daily, but could it be something? I'm looking for more details in this motion, like, you know, we've talked about reviewing it a year or two. In my personal opinion, I think a year or two is too long. I would think if it was possible to do it by term, because then if there was a situation and if there was becoming negative impacts, it could be dealt with fairly quickly than letting it go on for a year or two. So just a suggestion, I'm throwing it out there. And also at the last board meeting, we had, uh, for positivity, add some FTE to the equity department. I'm wondering, um, if, um, you know, again, I'm getting my fingers in and I shouldn't, I apologize, Director Daily, but could one of those FTEs kind of, you know, be a liaison to a liaison, something like that? I just wrestle with a little more specifics on how we can mitigate the risk because I'm not feeling a hundred percent confident that we are and I, and I think it's going to be a growth. I don't think we're going to fix it overnight, but we need to move forward somehow. That was a long-winded question. I'm sorry.
Daily, is that a possibility?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I, I would suggest in the final further resolved where it indicates a regular schedule of consultation, I, I would be happy to, to take some direction from trustees as to what they would feel would, would meet the needs of, uh, being able to monitor the program, improve on the program, when they would want reports back, what would make sense to them. Uh, I do agree that every couple of years or every year is probably insufficient. But I, I would remind trustees as well that, um, the original motion was something determined by trustees. So I'm trying to offer somewhat of a framework and then look for, um, look for, I, I mean, ultimately they're all your motions. Um, I, I'm making some recommendations here I think we can work from. But I think that, um, we're open to any of those options.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Trustee Ohan Chanada, you, do you have a follow up question?
No, and I'm going to ask procedural through you to, Mr. Chair, how, how, how would we do this? Would this be something we could ask, you know, to come back with some more details, um, you know, with consideration for some of our opinions or do we do it right now? How, how, how's the best way to proceed with this, I guess is my question?
My, my, uh, suggestion would be to amend. If you're planning to get something on a regular basis, uh, maybe every quarter or every six months or year, we got to specify it and staff will take it back and they'll do their, uh, report and bring it back to us. And if there's any details that we would like in that report, we got to specify that. So again, it's up to trustees to have the discussion and then come up with some kind of solution.
And here's my concern with that. I, am I going to say that I'm an expert for frequency? No. Do I have some ideas? So again, we're gaining some stakeholder feedback from all of our interested parties, our, our, our staff, some of our community groups that, about what they think as well. I know it, it delays it a little bit, I understand, but sometimes delaying it will make it right and will make it to start to work. So I offer that up for people's consideration.
Uh, Trustee Ohan Chanada, we can put forth, uh, some ideas and then we can get staff to chime in and, uh, let us know whether the, our requests are realistic and if they achievable. So, so a little bit of that. And, uh, we'll go down the speakers list now. We have, uh, Trustee Guzzo, Trustee Bowie, Trustee O'Brien, Vice Chair Agnew and, uh, Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I just, I, I noticed there's been a couple of comments that have come that talks about, you know, the result of the majority of the, of the survey. And, and I think we need to take a step back and look at it in a different manner. If I look at the comments that are made throughout the survey, um, it constantly says, even though there were some varied responses, we've got one part that says, other participants suggested the program has no value and actually does harm to students. And while some community members noted the potential value of the program, they also suggested deconstructing, reworking the program to ensure that racialized students are neither harmed nor targeted by officers. Some suggestions were also made around gathering more data specifically from racialized individuals who might be disproportionately harmed by the SLO program. And I'm taking this directly out of, uh, Dr. Carly Moore's report. View of school liaison officer roles. Um, in general, most students, parent guardian and staff respondents agreed that having the SLO program makes students feel safe at school. However, community respondents commented on safety via the negative effects of SLO programs on racialized youth. Racialized students and parents of racialized students tended to agree more often to the statement, I slash my child is being watched and or targeted at school with the SLO program in place. And then the next part, it says almost all staff, especially school administrators, had positive views of the SLO program. So does the positive role from the school administrators dismiss the, the feeling of those racialized students? Then it says here, perceptions around safety among focus group participants further supported the survey results. That is, students and community members both mentioned that an officer may make some people feel safe, but not others. While school administrators overwhelmingly mentioned the need for an SLO at the school for safety reasons, particularly in schools with high enrollment or during, uh, large events. And then another point, it says, um, it's perception of the value of school liaison officers in the school. The shared concerns of how the program currently operates, although some acknowledge that such programs could lead to better student police relationships and trust. They shared concerns. And when asked explicitly about whether SLO should be assigned to our HCDSP stu, schools, almost all survey respondents agreed. Only students and parents slash guardians who preferred not to answer the racialized identity question had a significantly lower agreement rate to this question, as did parents slash guardians of racialized students. The data is there. It is not clear. It is, it, it's not clear to say that this survey resulted in, in the program continuing on and that it has advantages. It's very clear that there are, are issues in the program, the way it's presented and particularly to, to our racialized students. And as the ser, as the, as this states right now, I, I just, I, I, I don't think that the app tracker that was discussed meets the needs. I think that there should have been some thought put into what it could have looked like a little differently. You know, the process of collecting data, uh, um, who's going to do that? Who's going to put it together? We're sharing this report with Halton Regional Police Services. Why aren't we sharing it with our community groups? You know, the fact is, is our job is to make sure that our students feel safe, all of them. And we need to make some changes in the way it's presented right now, just to re-implement the program without having a look at it or, or making any change doesn't meet that need. I, I'd like to ask one more question, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Trustee.
Thank you. Um, if, if there was to be a monitor, who's going to monitor? And how will it be dealt with if there is harm done to students? Who's going to be the person responsible identifying that?
Thank you. Uh, Director Daily?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Guzzo. I, I think the manner of how reports come back to the board and how we assess whether the needs of either the community and or the mandate of the program are being met, have to determine what our baseline is for that. And if we find going forward that the mandate of the program is not being ever met or, or, um, feedback mechanism we use for that, then I think that would be how we would move forward or not move forward.
Thank you, Director Daily. Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. I will jump to Trustee Tokiva, who has not spoken. Uh, Trustee Tokiva, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, sorry. I kind of just wanted to build off of Trustee Ohan Chanada's question. I'm just kind of undecided on this motion because there is a lot of things that are up in the air with it. I am concerned about the specifics of the consultation. Um, I'm also kind of wondering, Director Gill, you mentioned, um, that we'll be meeting with Halton Police to discuss, um, the report based on what trustees want to establish. Police to discuss the report based on what trustees want to establish with them. When would we kind of communicate what we want to discuss with the Halton Regional Police? And can we have specific recommendations or requirements in order to keep the program to continue? Because the program, I think it can be helpful, but I think that there are issues that need to be addressed, and I would feel more comfortable supporting this if we were able to communicate those findings and concerns with the police services. So I don't know if you'd be able to help me with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I'm being asked there. I, I think...
Can I ask, I'll like rephrase it, sorry?
Maybe I'll just, I think if the recommendations, as they stand, are not recommendations that the board feels are adequate, then, but, but they do feel that some recommendations could be made going forward, I think those, those, those should be brought forward.
Uh, thanks. Sorry, could I ask a clarifying question?
Excuse me. Okay, trustee Tokiva, go ahead with your follow-up question.
When will those concerns be able to be brought forward? Would that be tonight, or would that be at a later date approaching the meeting with the Halton Regional Police?
Director Daly?
That's really up for trustees to decide, not, not for me to decide. So whether anything is resolved tonight, either through motion, whatever the motion is really up to the board of trustees.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, but thank you for your question. We have a couple of speakers. We have trustee Bowie, trustee O'Brien, Vice Chair Agnew, and trustee DeRosa. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, can I make a comment, or are we just on questions?
You can make a comment.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to say that I think that in conversations with our students and the student body, and looking at the data that's been presented, I think we do see mixed responses. I think overall, the majority of students either are not aware of the program, or, I, I actually would stop there, because I don't think that the majority are either viewing it in a positive or negative light, which I think is something that is of a concern to us, is making sure that if we are implementing this program, that it is effective in accomplishing its mandate. But I think that as well, recognizing that we are coming out of the pandemic, when many, we didn't have visitors in many of our schools at all, and I think we're coming into a time of turbulence, and I think that there is a value that the SLO program can present to students, whether it's effective at doing so, and does so in a manner that doesn't harm students, is a conversation for us to have. But I think that as a representative of the students, we haven't heard overwhelmingly negative or harmful, harmful perspectives on this program, recognizing that those perspectives do exist, and that they are important for us to listen to. I think that moving forward, if we re-implement the program, I think that we can only do so with continual review and collection of data, which I believe that this motion recognizes. So I will be voting in favor of the motion, and I believe that that's not necessarily representative of 100% of our student body, but I think that moving forward, it can allow us to do some really good work to improve the relationship with this program.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Moving down speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien, Vice Chair Agnew, and trustee DeRosa. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Director Daly, I am not that familiar with this program at all. I know you are. As it stands now, does the program come more or less, I don't want to say prepackaged, but with a, kind of an outline, or a, kind of a package that is made by the Halton Police? Do they set the standards? Do they make all the decisions around that presently?
Director Daly?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So the mandate of the program does come from the police protocol that we share with the regional police, our public counterpart, and the two French boards in the region. We do review the protocol, and I have to rely on Superintendent Cordar for the details. I think it's every two years. But the police protocol is a bigger kind of overarching document. There's, there's not a ton of detail in it with regards to how the SLO program does operate. But again, I think for, I, I think for, for trustees that were able to hear some of the feedback from the regional police, I think they're, they're open to continuing to work with us. They've been a partner with the board on a lot of different things for a number of years. All that being said, we, they are a separate organization as well. We don't direct their work, or do they direct, direct ours? So I think that it's part of that ongoing conversation and partnership that we'd be able to hopefully lean on.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. On the speakers list, we have trustee Vice Chair Agnew and trustee DeRosa. Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I would actually, based on the conversations that we've had around the table this evening, some of the comments and questions that have been asked, I would actually like to make an amendment, if that's possible, Mr. Chair.
Sure, trustee Vice Chair Agnew.
And I can...
You have the...
I do, I can type it in the chat. So it's probably essentially going to be a strike and replace, but let me, let me put it in the chat, or I can send it to, what's easier, send it to Andrea?
Send it to Ms. Wynden, and I think better that trustees can have a good look at that.
Okay, just give me one second. Let me know when you get it, Andrea.
I've just received it, Mr. Agnew, I'll just drop it in.
Okay, I guess we can't do anything, we have to see the motion before we get a second. Can you zoom in a little bit? Okay, Vice Chair Agnew, can you read the whole motion, please?
Yeah, I sure can. So, "Be resolved that the director of education identify, propose, and implement changes to the program that will ensure it is meeting its mandate and not being utilized for other purposes, including but not limited to data collection, what data will be collected, how data will be collated, and who will be responsible for data gathering, what data will be collected, and how the findings will be reported, and ensuring it is reviewed. Review and identify aspects of the SLO program that may be better served carried out by other community organizations. How the program resources will be implemented to directly address the concerns raised by racialized students, staff, and parents as presented in the survey results. Be it further resolved that the director of education work in collaboration with the HRPS to identify and make the necessary program changes based on the stakeholder community feedback, survey data that was collected. The program can then be reinstated at such time that all of the above items have been implemented and reported to the board."
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. So Vice Chair Agnew moves this, I'm going to ask for a second there, please. Will the trustee second it? Trustee Murphy? So, Vice Chair Agnew, you get to open up discussion, and you have five minutes, so let me...
May I ask for clarification on this amendment? Is, is this like added as another be it resolved?
Thank you, trustee, trustee Carabella. This is a strike and replace of the main motion.
Oh, the whole motion is gone?
Let me get some clarity here. Vice Chair Agnew, what has been striked and replaced?
Well, that's the way, I mean, that I think can be up for discussion. You know, try, there are elements of the amendment that do replace some of the items that are here in the original motion, and so if I think the ease of simplicity, you know, I was looking at a strike and replace. If there is a way that we can implement the amendment into the existing motion, I'd be amiable to that, but I don't, I don't know how to make that happen, if I'm being honest.
I'll have to just look at that.
Let me hear your opinion, trustee Carabella, before we start the parliamentary... We have the original motion, and that motion, what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, Chair, I think you need that clarification before you proceed with the amendment. The last sentence of the proposed amendment appears to contradict the first be it resolved of the original motion, because the first be it resolved of the original motion talks about lifting the pause, and the amendment looks like it's talking about a certain, a number of conditions that need to be done before the program can be reinstated. So as it reads, it would, as, as I heard, this would be, only make sense if it was striking the entire original motion and replacing it with the wording that, of the amendment.
Carabella, you heard the opinion of Parliament Karpur, which I accept. So Vice Chair Agnew, is this what you plan to do, strike the original motion and replace with this?
Yep, that's fine, I'm fine with that, yep.
Okay, so trustee Carabella, you, you have your clarification there. So, moving forward, Vice Chair Agnew, you have five minutes to open up discussion on your amendment, and let's, Rosie, okay, so your time starts now.
Okay. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. And so, so we had a lot of conversation here this evening, I think it's been very constructive conversation. There seems to be various themes that have been emerging around data collection, around review, around communication, around working in collaboration and partnership with the HRPS on this program, identifying some of the gaps that may exist, working on ways to, to fill those gaps, and a few different other things. And so I'm not entirely sure, and I'll look to my fellow trustees to see if this, if this amendment does in fact capture, you know, all of those items. But I think it's important to recognize that, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the report has shown us that there are positives, there are, there are people in our school communities who do benefit from this program. There are also members of our community who do not benefit from this program. And so I do think it's a program worth trying to work with, to see if we can make this the best program possible for all of our staff and students in our schools. And I truly believe that everybody has the best intentions at heart, and I do think that we could work collaboratively with our partners at the HRPS to put together a program, or to amend the current program we have right now to make sure it is meeting those needs. Trustee Guzzo identified some of those areas, reading, reading off some of those comments that were there. That's, you know, those are disheartening, those are upsetting. I would ideally like a review that would come next that wouldn't have comments like that, because we've, we've addressed those concerns, and we've put something in place to, to try to have that not happen again. And so the idea behind this is, is to take, again, the feedback that we've had here this evening, implement a number of items that I think are very achievable, I think that they make absolute sense. Again, as someone running this program, I can't see how there'd be any opposition to wanting to make sure that this program is in fact not causing harm, that it is as beneficial as possible, that it's meeting the needs of all of our stakeholders. I think that's a win-win for everybody, and, you know, if, if those things can be put in place, then let's go ahead and reinstate this program. But then we've done it at a comfort level to know that it is being reviewed on a regular basis, we can attach timelines if you like, we know that there's a piece around data survey, we know there's a piece around education, and possibly working with some other community organizations that might make more sense. And so that's the idea behind this amendment, it's done in good spirit, and it's done in a way that's just trying to find a way forward, if you will, to ensure that we are, again, meeting the needs of all of our stakeholders in our schools by having this program there. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I've started a new speakers list. On this list, we have trustee O'Brien, trustee Hon Chanada, trustee Carabella, and trustee DeRosa. So trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
You're, you're muted, Mr. Trustee O'Brien.
Please start again, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, thank you trustee Aiden for bringing this forward. You mentioned timelines, and I'm kind of interested, I would, I was wondering if trustee Aiden would be open to a friendly amendment to realistic timelines, there's, there's a lot on the plate here, but I know it's doable, and I would just like to put that out. I don't know what you see as realistic, or what Director Daly sees as realistic as timelines.
So trustee O'Brien, do you have any idea where you want to put the timelines in?
Well, I was thinking the end of June, but I, not the one doing the work.
You want suggestions from staff? Okay, so Director Daly and Dr. Colley Moore, could you suggest some timeline, Director Daly?
I'm just thinking about my response, Chair Doherty. I, I, I would have to ask some questions, I, I, I don't think I fully understand what staff is being asked to do, so it's hard for me to say when we could bring it back. I don't know if it's to bring back a proposal to say, here's how, here's our suggestion for monitoring the program, and these are the types of things that we would do, or if we're being asked to carry out another survey and set a focus group, so I just need some clarity. Yeah, please.
I'll pass it on to Vice Chair Agnew to, to, to add a few comments, thoughts?
So thank you, Director Daly, and certainly, certainly the idea here is not to delay a process, not to drag feet, it's, we know that for, for those who rely on this program, who see the benefits of this program, I'm speaking specifically right now probably about our staff, that they're, they're looking to have this program reinstated, and as soon as possible. So I don't want to tie it up, Director Daly, with another survey, or anything of that matter. I think that there are elements here that our partners at the HRPS, I would hope would be able to take a look at in combination with our staff here to come up with some timelines and some ways of these things. I imagine some of these could actually be implemented quite quickly, to be honest. Some of them don't look time-intensive, they're probably things they're already aware of and already have. So, you know, I'm not looking to have a report come back, I'm not looking to have a survey come back, I think what we're looking for is, I think what we're looking for is, you know, on this date, whatever date that is that we pick, the idea will be that all of these items have been implemented, and then that program will be restarted. That's the way that I'm looking at it, maybe I'm, maybe I'm in a la-la land, and I apologize for that, I would be looking to my fellow trustees for some suggestions, but I don't want to delay this unnecessarily. If we can find a way to be efficient in how we do this, and how... if we can find a way to be efficient in how we do this and how this is moved forward.
And, Mr. Chair, that is what I'm looking forward to.
Right, so first of all, there are two things. We need to put a date on this. And second is that whether trustees are willing to do a friendly amendment. So first, let's, let's narrow down on a date and then we'll see if we can get an amendment. So I'll go around the table and ask trustees, do you have any suggestions? Have a speakers list here, trustee Ohan Chanada, trustee Carabella, trustee DeRosa, trustee Guzzo, and trustee Boye, do you have any suggestions to move forward?
I have a suggestion of a date to come back to us would be the meeting, May 17th. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, Director Daly, what are your thoughts on this? Do you see any challenges with implementing this?
I, I do, but I, I think I'd like to hear more of the, the conversation so I get a better understanding of.
Okay, okay.
I shouldn't say challenges, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around what, what we're being asked to do. Okay, so I'm not opposed to it in any.
Thank you, so I'll go back to trustees. Trustee Carabella, trustee DeRosa, trustee Guzzo, trustee Boye, do you have any comments on the date, May 17th?
Mr. Chair, I would be for the, yes, I would be for the, the earliest date possible.
Okay, thank you.
Then after this, I will have an amendment to add as well, thank you.
Trustees in the, in the boardroom, any comments? Trustee O'Brien?
I would go for that 100%, May 17th.
Thank you, trustee, thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee Vice Chair Agnew? Okay, so where would you like to add the date in this amendment? Does it look okay? So Ms. Swinton, I think it's be resolved that by the May 17th? Thank you. So let me go around table now and ask, this is, if this can be a friendly amendment, can we go ahead with this with unanimous consent?
I'm, yeah, I'm okay with it and I actually, sorry, I am okay with that date. And I actually, further to Director Daly's comment before, I don't even know that any of this has to come back necessarily to the board meeting, depending on how this is done. So, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Do I hear any opposition to this?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa?
Yeah, May 17th is not far away, I understand. But I, I am fundamentally opposed to the approach on this. I will speak to it when my turn comes. But I am, I am very much in support of the original motion. So I don't agree with this amendment.
That's fine, so trustee DeRosa, I take it that we do not have unanimous consent. So this will have to be an amendment to the amendment, okay? So trustee O'Brien, you move that?
I amend that phrase by.
Give me a second, I need to get my paperwork straight. So we have an amendment to the amendment and that is moved by trustee O'Brien. I'm going to ask for a second there. Trustee Murphy seconds it. So trustee O'Brien, you get to, you get five minutes to speak to your amendment.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm still taking all this in myself. There are definitely things that we do have to look at. I'm totally aware of that. Our racialized students have spoken and they've spoken quite clearly, and so have our parents. I, I can see the changes here will respond to that. And I'm fully confident that our staff will meet those needs so that by May 17th, it will be in place and we can reinstate the program, needing, meeting this, our students' needs as fully as we can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. I shall now open up the floor to discussions. Do we have any trustees who want to comment on this amendment to the amendment? Seeing none, I shall take this. Oh, trustee O'Brien, you get to close again.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I feel that the sooner the better and I really hope that all trustees will support this amendment. And I really do feel that the spirit of this is good and the outcome will be the best that we can do at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. So I shall now call the vote on the amendment to the amendment. The item that you see on your screen highlighted in yellow, that is the date being added to the amendment. So this motion was moved by trustee O'Brien. This amendment was moved by trustee O'Brien and seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote? Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Jan Tamasi? Trustee? Trustee? Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Boye?
In favor.
Trustee Masti Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor, in favor.
You want, you get only one vote. Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
I don't have a vote.
You don't have a vote?
I just.
So let me call the results?
I just wanted to let you know that trustee Jan Tamasi did text to me.
Okay. Thank you. I mentioned before and I sent an email to trustees that I would like them to be participating in the meeting. I'm not sure who's at the other end of the, of the computer or the other end of the phone. I'm not sure about that. Henceforth, we would like an efficient meeting and I'd like to focus on, on the meeting and trustees are on the table here. Thank you. So we have the results of the vote. We have conducted this vote. We have one, two, three, four, five in favor, one opposed, one extension. The amendment to the amendment carries. We shall now move on to the first amendment to the motion, which was moved by Vice Chair Agnew and seconded by trustee Murphy. But we have a speakers list for that. And on the speakers list was trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trust, Vice Chair Agnew. So Director Daly did ask us a question, so I think we deserve, need to give him a response as far as the logistics of this motion. So I'm thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a different opinion, that the way I read it is that we're just looking some, to some answers to these questions, you know, what type of data. So the logistics of gathering this information and what the actual process will be moving forward. So when it comes back to us on May the 17th, we can have more information to make a more informed decision about whether to, to reinstitute the SLO program. Is that your thought of this amendment, Vice Chair Agnew?
Vice Chair Agnew?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So not really.
Okay.
But thank you for the question, I think it's important. And, and I don't mean to be vague at all, I'm really trying to be conscientious of everybody's opinions and insights tonight. And I know this is a difficult subject. In ideal world, trustee Ohan Chanada, I think the way that I look at this is, is that there's a month between now and then for our team and the team at the Halton Regional Police Services to come together with some of these items, between them, figure out what's being asked and how those things can be done and implemented. And ideally, what I would like to see at the May 17th meeting would be, these are, these are all the things that have, these are all the things that are being implemented so that this program can be reinstated, as opposed to coming back to get our opinion on that. I would hope that it's clear enough, and if not, we need to make it clearer of what is being asked. And then ideally, if those two groups can come together and say, okay, data collection, what does that look like? How are we going to do it? All the things that are listed here and then have that. So then on the May 17th meeting, the, the conversation is, okay, you asked for it. We've come up with what we can provide and how it's, and when, and that it will be implemented for the start of this program. So that May 17th or thereafter, because of the meeting, that program is reinstated with all of these aspects to it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew.
Clear, sorry, is that clear as mud?
It was very clear to me.
And that was kind of, that was my question. You, you answered my question, I might have just asked it in the wrong way, so that was great, thank you. I do have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
And trustee Ohan Chanada?
Thank you so much, back to you, Vice Chair Agnew. Is there frequency involved in this? I'm trying to see with, you know, the effectiveness of the program, the frequency with which it's assessed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Yeah, and I think that's an excellent point as I'm looking through this and I know that one of our student trustees brought that forward as well. I, and I know that you had mentioned it earlier as well. I, I think perhaps we need to look at implementing a frequency. I would ideally, again, this is me speaking for me and, and my sort of thoughts to this. I think that off the bat, there should be an earlier review and assessment of how things are going. And then after that, perhaps on an annual basis. And my hopes are that when that, you know, if, on an annual basis, when this program is reviewed, hopefully we don't see some of those negative comments. Hopefully we see some positive responses and we see that maybe some of these things have been mitigated through the processes that have been put in place. But I would say at a minimum that this program should be reviewed on an annual basis. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chanada, on the speakers list, we have trustee Carabella, trustee DeRosa, trustee Guzzo, and trustee Boye. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to propose an amendment. I wanted to add at the very beginning, because I wanted to add basically the, the beginning of the original motion, that be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board lift the pause on school liaison officer program offered at HCDSB schools while, while it, and then continue, while it be further resolved the rest of trustee Agnew's amendment.
Let's get that wording correct. Look. Trustee Carabella, is this what you're thinking?
So that be it further resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board lift the pause on the school liaison officers program while the following, let me see, while in the process of being further reviewed by May. So what I'm trying to say is that, I, I saw it actually as, as a separate be it resolved, but this, this works as well, so that, yeah. So that's the amendment, that's right, so. Lift the pause on the school.
Mr. Chair, it's the parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Yes, Chair. As I read the proposed amendment, it would appear to conflict with the last sentence of the motion, which is highlighted in yellow. So it's, there, there's the conflict between the two. One says that the, it would be implemented after all of these elements have been done. And the proposed amendment appears to say it would be, the pause would be lifted immediately. So I don't know how you want, you or the mover wish to resolve that.
So trustee Carabella, as I read it now and the, as the parliamentarian pointed out, your amendment is not in order. So can you work on, and you tweak those, that wording to make sure it does not conflict?
So the, the bottom was added as an amendment? We voted on the bottom?
It existed.
Pardon?
It existed, bottom part in yellow.
Right.
Was the amendment to the main motion, which existed.
So let's see what can be done. My goal is, yes, thank you.
Trustee Carabella, can you hold for a second?
Yes.
Yes. What we are currently, what you're currently debating is the proposed substitution or amendment that is in, that is on the screen. You haven't voted to make that, to, for that to replace the main, current main motion as yet. But as you're amending the amendment, or as trustee Carabella's motion would amend the amendment, it, it needs to be, it needs to be not internally contradictory. I don't know if she wants to delete that last sentence as part of her amendment.
Okay, yeah.
May do it.
I'll delete that, yes, that's a great suggestion.
So what do you like to do? Keep the blue and strike the red part?
That's right, and the red bottom, and can, I just have to see the bottom because, so that we keep the motion, I mean, keep the program, and while this is being reviewed, and then once it's reviewed, all those would be, any changes could be implemented. So stakeholder, community feedback, survey data that was collected would be implemented or something.
Okay.
Make the necessary program changes based on, yeah, so that was collected and would be implemented. So if my motion, if the, if my amendment passes where we keep the, the SLO program, we do the amendment of trustee Agnew. And in May 17th, perhaps things would shift and change, but, and the program would continue on.
Thank you, okay, so we have the original motion, we have one amendment made by Vice Chair Agnew and we have the amendment to the amendment, which is being made by trustee Carabella. I'm going to ask for a second there to this.
I will second.
We have DeRosa, who seconds the amendment to the amendment. I shall now hand the floor over to trustee Carabella and you have five minutes to open discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to respect everybody and respect all the good comments that came out and all the good that this, the SLO program offers. You know, something here, it's, this is a comment from, regardless of the reason for being called to our school, our commitment remains to be positive experiences for staff, students, and their families. We take pride in being approachable, trustworthy, and fair in dealing with the entire school community. We are committed to ensuring inclusivity and fair and equitable treatment of every student. Initially, I also voted against putting the program on a pause because I believe that it is needed and it can continue while it's being reviewed and while tweaks are being made to better, better serve all students. I acknowledge there's weaknesses and there's also good things. So I'm saying, keep the, keep the good going and we'll be working on the weaknesses through this, through trustee Agnew's amendment. through this, um, through Trustee Agnew's amendment. Um, so I, I hope, I, I really hope that the trustees, uh, can, can see that it can work as a, uh, an organic, uh, motion that can be implemented, that can start and get, get made better in, by May seventeenth. So I hope that you can support this amendment.
Questions for this particular amendment to the amendment? Seeing none, I shall hand the floor back to, oh, we have a Trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just have a simple clarifying question for Trustee Carabella. So is it the intention of this motion that the pause will be lifted immediately and that the, um, let's say that this review process, um, if not a full review process, um, will happen simultaneously with that program being reinstated?
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you for the question, yes. And you reminded me that there are so many programs that are absolutely awesome. Uh, the DARE program, online safety in the elementary schools and in the high schools. We have two more months of school. Kids have been, you know, they just need it. Um, I think it's fantastic. They offer a lot of fantastic opportunities, uh, in education, in public safety, citizenship, that I think they can both, uh, be lifted and continue, be, and be revised. Many programs function like that as well, that, you know, if there are tweaks that need to be done or even, you know, different avenues added, added later on. Programs don't just stop, they usually keep going and the good changes are made. So that's what I'm proposing here. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question there or, okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee O'Brien, you're next up, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. It, it's, um, an interesting amendment. I, it's a, I guess when it comes down, it's a question of what a person thinks is the most important thing. Is it most important to keep the program going? Is that the most important thing? Or is it more important to make the changes? And looking around the table, I know that each person has their own, um, uh, spin on this. I feel that no matter what the outcome is, in the end, I, I really do believe we are going to achieve a, a good SLO program. Um, so I just, um, wanted to add that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Uh, next on the speakers list, we have Trustee De Rosa and Trustee Guzzo. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I want to congratulate my, uh, my colleague for, um, proposing this change. Uh, I think the change is a good, um, uh, reflection of what my personal objectives are, so I will be supporting it. Um, but also, uh, it allows us to take into account, uh, the many valid points that my other colleagues have made with this. So I am particularly concerned with not the, the potential impact of pausing the program. I voted against it at the time when it first came to us. But this change actually, um, I find it absolutely, um, brilliant. So I will be supporting it. Thank you, um, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Next up is Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I will not be supporting this amendment. Essentially, what we're saying is we, is, is historically, those that are the oppressors are making decisions on behalf of the oppressed. So, um, I, I can't, I can't say, let's continue something when we have a group that are saying that's causing harm.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Uh, seeing no other speakers, I'm going to hand the floor back.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I just raise a point of privilege very, very quickly? You know, our respective positions on whichever side of the fence they may lie, uh, does not allow Trustee Guzzo to categorize me as an oppressor. So I think great offense to that, and thank you very much, I hope it's noted.
Number one, Trustee, Trustee De Rosa, this is warning number two. You have been issued one warning earlier today. This is warning number two. You will not speak over the chair and when you do not have the floor. Am I clearly understood, Trustee De Rosa? Thank you. Uh, since we have no other speakers on the list, we shall now move to, back to Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor to close discussions on the amendment to the amendment. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I really think that this amendment, uh, will blend. It's a good compromise, uh, of goals that we each have and that we see in the, uh, reports, our report. Uh, this motion would fill the needs of all students and all staff and parents who have written in their comments. I think it takes into account all the comments, uh, the ones that were positive, the one, and the ones that need fixing, uh, where there was a weakness that can be addressed. So I, I hope that you can see that and support it in that it's, it's, I think, a good for everybody. Um, with the two months left of school, or maybe, yeah, two months, two and a half months, I think a lot of good can, can be done with this program, with this, uh, within education. And it's needed. And then, uh, at the end of May, May seventeenth, if there are some new aspects that can be added, bettered, uh, be, so be it. And it'll be even much better for the end of the school year and have a good start for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Carabella, uh, for your closing remarks. I shall now call the vote. Trustee O'Brien, how do you vote? Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, I'm in favor.
Uh, Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Abstained.
Uh, Tassiu Hanchanada?
I'm opposed.
Guzzo?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
We have three in favor. We have four opposed and none abstained. The amendment to the amendment fails. We shall now move back to the first amendment, which is put forth by Director Daly.
Sorry to interrupt. In the second, um, the second bullet, I think there's a typo there. Assuming you see, review and identify aspects to the SLO program, instead of review and identity. It's just a typo.
Yeah, we can correct that. Uh, Ms. Swindon? Oh, yeah, it's corrected. Thank you. So trustees, we are going back to the first amendment, which is put forth by Vice Chair Agnew and, uh, trusted, seconded by Trustee Murphy. We have a speakers list, which we will, will continue on that. We have Trustee De Rosa, Trustee Guzzo, and Trustee Bowie. So Trustee De Rosa, would you still like to speak to this?
No, I think I've said what I have to say. Thank you.
Would you still like to speak to this amendment?
I guess, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add, uh, uh, an amendment. I'm not going to try to make it a friendly amendment because I don't think it'll pass. So I'll just make it as an amendment.
Mr. Chair?
Really?
Were you addressing me or were you addressing Nancy Guzzo?
Trustee, De Rosa, we have a process in place. If you have a comment, you put it, your hand up there, or if you have a point of order, you call a point of order, a point of privilege or something. Uh, I do not appreciate people speaking one over, over the other. I made it very clear to see. So do you have a point of order?
I, I do have a point of order.
You should state.
I was in the process of finishing a sentence. I was wondering whether you were still listening to me or someone else. Am I finished?
So if you have a point of order, you call a point of order and everybody stops and listens to your point of order. So in this particular case, do you have a point of order? You will state your point of order right away. Go ahead, Trustee, uh, De Rosa.
My point of order, Mr. Chair, was that we hadn't finished our interaction. So you asked me if I had anything more to say, and I said no. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, please continue.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, that through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, it, it's just a, a small amendment to the last paragraph. So it would...
State, can you state that?
Absolutely. Be it further resolved that the Director of Education work in collaboration with HRPS and our Manager of Human Rights and Equity. And the remainder stays the same.
Okay, is that, uh, Trustee Guzzo, is that, uh, correct?
It is, thank.
The highlighted, uh, words on the screen?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So now we are again back to amendment to the amendment. And I'm going to ask, need a seconder for this. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Murphy, okay. So, uh, I shall now hand this back to Trustee Guzzo to open up discussion. You have five minutes, you don't want the five minutes?
I, 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 I think I've said a lot.
Okay. Um... Trustees, do we have, uh, questions on this? And I can open up a new speakers list. Trustee O'Brien, is this, is your name up for this amendment or is it?
No, Mr. Chair, it was up for the, um...
So we do not have any new speakers on this list, so I shall now hand it back to you, Trustee Guzzo, to close discussions on...
Mr. Chair, my, my hand is up, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Um, yes, so I'm just wondering about, uh, this additional, um, amendment, whether it would be our superintendent, uh, in charge of that liaison officer, which would be, um, Superintendent Cordero. Um, so may I have clarity on, um, on who should be working with, with, um, the collaboration with HRPS from our board? Thank you.
I'll get you that answer. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, what were your thoughts?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, exactly what I've proposed, which is our Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity, so that that lens can be brought to that piece, specifically because of our racialized students.
Thank you. So Trustee Carabella, the way I'm understanding it is, it's, uh, Mrs. Jay Rahman, who is the Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity.
And could you ask, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, a follow-up question to Director Daly? Um, where does Superintendent Cordero fit into, uh, this amendment? Or into like this whole amendment?
Director Daly?
Uh, I, I don't think the amendment limits, um, what staff can be involved in the collaboration. I think it specifies, um, which staff need to be involved.
Thank you, Director Daly, thank you, Trustee Carabella. Uh, seeing no other questions, I will hand it back to Trustee Guzzo to close the discussions on this, and then I'll call the vote. Trustee Guzzo? Process.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't have anything to say at this point.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee Guzzo. I shall now call the vote on the amendment to the amendment. The item that you see on your screen, trustees, highlighted in yellow. So, uh, Trustee De Rosa?
I'm opposed to the amendment.
Trustee Massey? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Uh, Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Hunchanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
So we have five in favor, two opposed. The amendment to the amendment carries. We shall now move, move back to the first amendment, which was moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee Murphy. Uh, and we still have a speakers list there. We have Trustee Bowie on that speakers list. Trustee Bowie, would you still like to talk, speak to that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, my first point that I'd like to make, uh, obviously, I can't do this as a student trustee, but I think for clarity's sake, perhaps taking out the last sentence of that last paragraph and adding it as its own be it resolved, uh, would help for clarity's sake, just so that it's not lumped in with that last paragraph, but that it's saying that all of the resolutions stated above have to be implemented. Um, and I think that the second thing, uh, that I'd like to say is that the one thing that I am a little bit confused about, well, not confused, but I think that in that original motion, there's, uh, a sort of a structure set up for, uh, implementing a regular schedule of consultation to solicit feedback from student, staff, family, and community members. I think that this, um, the motion as amended here speaks to what will happen in the immediate future regarding the program. But I'd just like to highlight a need for perhaps in the future, a separate motion, uh, setting up a structure for the board to have a regular review of the program, uh, because I think that's valuable moving forward. And, uh, the last thing that I have is just a small grammar thing. Um, it says in the first bullet point under the first be it resolves, it says that, um, what data will be collected and how will the findings be reported? And ensuring it reviewed, I think it's ensuring it will be reviewed.
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. I think your first question can be easily implemented. And let me ask, uh, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Parliamentarian Kapoor, can we just move the last sentence? The program can then be reinstated, uh, with a be it further resolved that the program, a separate paragraph?
I, I, it's, it's, uh, fine either way, yes.
So the first part, then I forgot the second part and the third part, so, Trustee Bowie? So, go ahead, uh, Vice Chair Agnew?
Just to the point of, whatever you want to call it. Uh, sorry. Um, but, uh, I know that, um, our student trustees are not able to make amendments.
Yeah.
But I would be, you know, I don't mean to be out of turn here. I'm just trying to be responsive.
Yeah.
I would be happy to make an amendment on your behalf, if that's what you're wishing to put forward with respect to that review piece.
So the first part...
The other piece is structural, but I just wanted to say that.
So the first structure part is resolved. The second part, would you like to take a shot at that? Uh, Vice Chair Agnew? But it'll have to be an amendment.
Yeah, so we could make an amendment that would say... Okay, so where are you looking to put that? Sorry, I don't mean to be...
Yeah, um, perhaps... Sorry, sorry, sorry. I think perhaps, um, it, it is, it is a separate topic, so I'd also be fine if it was presented as a separate motion for clarity's sake. But if you want to add it as an amendment, perhaps just at the end, as a separate bullet point, um, because I think that it's, it's something that's important.
So it be a further resolved?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
What? Right, yeah, I think it would make sense to probably put it in here, if we're going to put it somewhere. Okay. So I would be happy to move that on behalf...
Okay, so...
Of Trustee Bowie.
So can Vice Chair Agnew? So we were on Trustee Bowie's speakers, we have two other speakers on that, but I'm going to, they're going to move to an amendment, correct? Vice Chair Agnew?
Yes, again, on behalf of our student trustees.
So can you fine tune the motion on the screen?
I believe Ms. Swenden is doing that currently.
Yeah, if she needs clarification, it's just the last be it further resolved of the original motion that reads be it further resolved that staff implement a regular schedule of consultation to solicit feedback from students, families, staff, community members, and the HRPS to help ensure the SLO program is meeting the needs of our community and continues to fulfill its mandate with the HCSB.
Is that okay, Trustee Bowie?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that's fine, Mr. Chair.
So, trustees, we are back to the amendment, to the amendment, and this is being moved. Not sure, can you move an amendment again, Vice Chair? Vice Chair, let me just ask Parliamentarian Kapoor. Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Yes, Chair.
Here, we have, the first amendment was moved by Vice Chair Agnew. So the second amendment, can Vice Chair Agnew move the same, move another amendment? Or does some other trustee need to do that?
There's no prohibition on Vice Chair Agnew moving an amendment to her own amendment. It's allowed.
Thank you, thank you, just checking. Okay, thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. So we have an amendment moved by Vice Chair Agnew. I'm going to look for a second. Trustee Guzzo seconds it. So trustees, the highlighted part is what is being amended of the amendment. And Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor for five minutes.
Trustee Bowie, do you have anything you'd like to speak to on this? I'm happy to share the time with you.
Yeah, I think it, I think it, I'll borrow one of our favorite phrases, but I think it speaks for itself. I think that it was brought forward originally by Staff and Director Daley, and I think that it just adds a piece to this motion that allows for us to create a structure to continually review this program, even past this first stage of implementation, perhaps many years into the future, if it's fulfilling what we need it to fulfill, if it's harming students or not. And I think that that's something important for us to bring forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have questions from trustees? I see Trustee Mastri Amar, you have question, your hand up.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I don't remember if this question was asked already, but something that just came up to me was it says to schedule regular consultations, to solicit feedback. Do we have any idea how we're going to get that feedback? Would it be through surveys or any specific groups that we would want to ask?
I think the question came up, Director Daley, would you like to answer it? It's up to trustees, I believe.
Correct.
It's up to trustees to determine how we want it. Okay, so seeing no, we have Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up.
Thank you through Ms. Chair. That be it further resolved was a part of the main motion that most of us agreed on, and I give kudos to Trustee Bowie for catching that, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Since we do not have any other speakers on this list, I shall now hand it back to Trustee Vice Chair Agnew to close discussion, and then I'll call the vote.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, Vice Chair Agnew and Trustee Bowie, you'd like to close this?
I've got nothing to close with. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have done lots of amendments. So I shall now call the vote on the amendment to the amendment. You see the highlighted part. This amendment was moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to, yeah, can you come back to me? I'm just thinking about it.
Trustee Uvan Chanada?
Thank you, I'm in favor.
Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to abstain, actually.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
We have five in favor. One opposed, one abstained, the amendment to the amendment carries. We are back to the amendment, moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee Murphy, and we have a speakers list there, and that's Trustee Carabella and Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to this amendment as it stands now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Although I understand the purpose of this part of the amendment, of this motion of this SLO program, I cannot support this because I believe that we should not be pausing the program to do this. Thank you.
Do you still best to speak to?
Yes, I do. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. After looking at this and hearing the discussion, I think the will of the trustees is the best program for these, for our students. I think we all at some level agree that there has to be some kind of SLO program. And I commend Trustee Agnew for bringing this forward. I think this is something we can definitely all, definitely all live with. My only fear is when it comes to the actual deciding whether or not the necessary program changes have been made, if we will agree on that. And I, my understanding of, and I, please tell me if I'm wrong, is that we are trusting the director with the Equity Officer to bring about those changes. And there is, there's a trust there. And so that when May 17th comes, we know that will happen. And I just putting it out there, I, it's not necessarily questioned, but I just want to clear the air, that the director and the human rights person will have these changes made. And I must want to just put it forward to Trustee Agnew, she will answer it. Is that your understanding too?
Sure. Vice Chair Agnew? You'd like to answer that?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer it in the best way.
Sure.
I, I'm going to speak from a place of trust and hope, if that's the right word. I have faith that, that both parties want to, want what we said earlier, that they want to have the best program available to meet the needs of all of our stakeholders in the best way possible. And so I believe that both parties will enter this with the right intentions to get this done and to put in place what needs to be put in place so that we can unpause this program and reinstate it. So that is my hope, that is my faith, that is my understanding, that that is what will transpire. I can't, I can't speak to whether or not that's going to happen, but I believe that everyone will have the best of intentions to make sure that that happens, because I can't honestly believe that anybody would willingly want to have a program in place that they knew had gaps and could possibly be harmful to our students. And so I do think that there will be a strong desire to find ways to implement these items and have that ready for May 17th.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have a follow?
No, just thank you, Trustee Agnew, for your candid answer.
Thank you. And we have a final speaker, Trustee De Rosa, and after that, I shall call the vote on the amendment. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be supporting this amendment because I believe that the road back to implementation would be long and hard-worth. So I think May 17th is a very aggressive date to get the program right, and we're going to have to come back to the well a number of times. And with that, facing that reality, I think that eliminating the program is, or pausing the program, doesn't do it justice. I think it's better to have the program in place and deal with the exceptions rather than the other way around. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
De Rosa, with that, I shall now move to close the discussion. Hand the floor back to Vice Chair Agnew to close discussion on Amendment One. You see that on your screen, which was moved by Vice Chair Agnew and seconded by Trustee Murphy. So Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I think we've said a lot tonight, and I believe that most of our intentions have been clearly communicated. We've had some great conversations and questions and debate. So I don't personally have anything else to add. But again, I believe that we all want to do the right things for the right reasons, and especially when it comes to this SLO program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, and I shall now call the vote. Trustee Uvan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Massey? Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
So we have five in favor, two opposed, no extensions, the amendment carries. Now we've got to move back to the main motion. Yeah, we've got to move back to the main motion as amended and take a vote on that. So we have the main motion. Was it moved by, main motion, okay.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
My question for clarification is if the whole motion was a strikeout and substitute, didn't we just vote on that motion?
Yeah, we voted on the amendment, but good question here, and let me just...
It was complete. Okay, thank you.
Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Yes, Chair, you are proceeding correctly. What you just voted on was an amendment by substitution, and the amendment has been adopted. You still need to vote on the main motion as amended. It does, it does take two votes, a second vote at this point to decide on the main motion.
Thank you. So, Trustee Carabella, you have the answer there.
Thank you very much.
Moving back, so I shall now call the vote on the main motion as amended. Trustee Uvan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
I'm abstaining.
So we have four in favor, two opposed, one extension, the amendment, the amendment to the main motion carries, the motion carries, and we shall now move on to the next order of business. Thank you, trustees, for a great discussion. Next order of business is staff reports. There are no staff reports tonight. Next order of business is information items, and the first one is student trustee update. Student trustees, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'll be connecting the achieving part of the report. So elected incoming officials, trustee Chua and Kuzma, have been attending student senate meetings and watching board meetings to familiarize themselves with their role. In order to ease their transition in August, incoming student trustees will be leading our upcoming executive council meeting at student senate to introduce themselves and familiarize themselves with the leaders of senate and their needs and concerns, which will allow for more effective goal-setting for the upcoming school year. Outgoing transitional and incoming student trustees will additionally be focusing their efforts on student senate applications, which will be released in May. This will be the incoming trustee's first big task, shaping the future of the senate. Trustee Tokiwa and trustee Mastri Amar plan to work closely with trustee Bowie and incoming trustees Kuzma and Chua to ensure a group with strong leadership and diverse experience is selected. Our student well-being committee has been involved with the mental health leadership team regarding discussions involving the board's mental health strategy for the upcoming school year. On behalf of senate, we'd like to thank our wonderful guests for taking the time to meet with us and for the fruitful and insightful discussion.
Who's speaking next?
That's me. Sorry about that. I'll be presenting Believing. So as Lent has come to a close, the student trustees hope all members of our board have had joyous and reflective Easter season. During the spring period of renewal and reflection, we look forward to our upcoming opportunities to connect as a community of faith. As we approach Catholic Education Week, senate will be involved in both the Journey with Jesus Celebration and the Ontario Catholic Youth Day organized by the Catholic Board Cabinet of Ausstego. We're excited to celebrate Catholic education with our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I will be presenting Belonging for today. So many secondary schools in our board are excited to be participating in Relay for Life, which is a fundraiser to raise money for the Canadian Cancer Society. Our school communities welcome more opportunities for collaboration, school spirit, and a return to some normal festivities, including school plays, graduation, and prom celebrations. Students are concerned about recent allegations of staff behavior and discrimination towards some students in the board. Concerns such as these are definitely top of mind in our schools and among our students. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustees, and for your presentation here. I shall now open up the floor to trustees if they have any questions or comments for our students. Seeing none, thank you once again for bringing this amazing report and a student voice to the table. Really appreciate that. Moving on to the next item, school's update. Director Daley? Director Daley?
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just got a couple of slides to support this meeting's update. this meeting's update. There we go. So we've all seen this many times throughout the year. We still are maintaining these particular goals as we enter into the stretch run a little bit with regards to our school year, and certainly the topic of maintaining self-safe and healthy schools was something that we touched on at the special board meeting last night. So just a reminder that the protective measures that we currently still have in place, staff and students must continue to self-screen every day before attending school using the COVID-19 school and childcare screening tool. All staff and students may choose to continue to wear masks and eye protection, and our local public health has strongly encouraged, and I would do the same, all of our staff and students to consider wearing masks, particularly indoors, in areas where they feel that they can't maintain physical distancing. Happy units, we've been in the process throughout the year of placing happy units throughout our classroom spaces. All of our elementary classes, apologize for the typo there, and all of our schools now have happy units in classroom learning areas. Units have been delivered to all of our secondary schools, so they've all received them. And at the secondary level, we're in the process of moving the units from the loading dock into the classrooms. And also a reminder to staff, students, and parents that rapid antigen tests continue to be available to staff, students, and children. We have plenty in supply at the school level and also to kind of back up any of those supplies as well. Our change in learning environments for our elementary students came into effect today. So that's students who have moved either to St. Clair virtual school or from St. Clair back to in-person learning. So we're hopeful that that transition goes smoothly and welcome students either back to in-person learning or welcome to the new environment remotely. Secondary students will have that opportunity to move at the midterm point of the semester, which I think is next week. I think it's April twenty, or the end of this week is our secondary midterm. A reminder that while we've talked a lot about vaccinations in a COVID context, that we have reinstituted or public health's reinstated the school-based immunization program for grade seven and eight students. And those immunizations that are offered are listed in the slide. That process has started in a number of our schools already and will continue throughout the spring. Boards are required next school year to offer a remote learning option, both at the elementary and secondary panels. We're going to be getting some information out this week to gauge interest from our parents about a different secondary remote model. So as opposed to the hybrid model that we've used the past two years, we'd offer a separate secondary virtual model. We'd be asking students and parents to commit to that option for the year. It's hard to know at this point until we do gauge interest what courses we'll be able to offer. We'd obviously offer compulsory courses, but it's likely that, sorry, it's likely that electives will be limited because it's likely that we won't have strength of numbers to support a wide range of elective offerings, but that remains to be seen. The secondary virtual or remote option, this is much like the remote option we're offering with elementary, that it's a focus on real-time or synchronous instruction for the majority of the day, sort of the three hundred minutes of instructional time. The secondary panel, it would be two hundred and twenty-five minutes and then supplemented by asynchronous learning. Students from multiple schools will be pooled together in the same classes, so students from across the board. It may be necessary, and this is also true in our face-to-face environment, sometimes if there's smaller numbers of students, we do a multi-grade or multi-level class. We try to avoid that, but that'll again be determined on what interest we receive from students. It's for students who are registered in our schools and live within the Halt region. Students, even though they're learning virtually, may be required to do some of their final culminating tasks or exams in person, depending on the nature of the course. Virtual students, it will be really a separate program, and because students will be from across the board, they won't have the same connection to school extracurriculars that they did under the under the current model, but there would be some opportunity for extracurricular activities to be offered remotely. And it's important to note, certainly make this clear to students and parents, there's a distinction between the remote learning option that the ministry's mandating us to offer and e-learning credits. They're not the same thing. So studying in a virtual or remote model next year doesn't count towards secondary e-learning credits. Those are our separate, separate credits. We will offer supports for students with special education needs or specific learning needs, as well as for our ELL learners. We won't be able to offer the full breadth of optional programming because of the nature of those programs, so it will be a limited offering, but an offering nonetheless for those students who, parents, who might wish to avail themselves of it. Quick update on secondary school, or sorry, summer school secondary credit courses. So they will run beginning July fourth to twenty-ninth. This has already been shared with parents. Co-op will run a slightly longer period. Summer school courses will be offered, as we have in the past, in a remote format. Teachers will be available to support. Students will have the appropriate supports in place, again, whoops, to support all of our student learning needs. As we have the last couple of summers, we've been fortunate to be able to, I think, really expand what credits students can acquire at summer school and offer the appropriate supports to ensure that all students can be successful there. We'll bring some additional information with regard to on-credit courses and summer programming to the next board meeting. Some of that information is coming out to the community shortly. I guess the last updates is always where, in the regular places. The last thing I would like to mention is that we do not intend, we do not intend to approve non-curricular field trips. So field trips, overnight field trips that are not directly related to course expectations will not be supporting those trips. We have three secondary schools that have outdoor education and the kind of outdoor ed trip is part of that curriculum. We're working on being able to provide that trip with the appropriate safety considerations put in place, but we're still working through that plan so we can share with the parents of those students to see if they're on board with it, and that's my update for this evening.
Thank you, Director Daley. Lots going on in schools and planning. I'm now going to open up the floor to trustees for questions. So I have a speakers list here. Vice Chair Agnew, trustee Master Yamar, trustee O'Brien, and trustee Carabella. So, oh, trustee Carabella was okay. So Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question with respect to summer school programming. How are decisions made with respect to what courses are actually offered? How do you determine what will be available and all of that?
Director Daley?
So they, like the credit courses?
The credit courses, yes, sorry.
That's a great question. Part of it in the past has been based on, we do want to offer compulsory credits because students do need sometimes to acquire compulsory, I mean, that's kind of the first line of defense in terms of graduation rates. We want to make sure our students do complete compulsory credits, so we typically would offer grade nine math, grade ten, or grade nine English, et cetera, science, et cetera. A little bit of it's based on conversations that are had, both at the school level amongst guidance counselors, to see what courses students may want to offer or may be interested in taking. A bit of it is also based on what's been popular, and by popular, I mean what students have signed up for in the past. There's also some consideration that if, and I'm speaking more from my experience at the school level, sometimes if there's courses offered in the summer that are elective courses that can have impact on what we can offer at day school, so sometimes that's a consideration. I think Superintendent Del Sorto is in the meeting. He may want to add to some of those considerations.
Thank you, Director Daley. Yes, oftentimes what we do as well as we look at the qualifications of teachers and based on the enrollment numbers, so that is a critical mass of students wanting a course, then we offer the course. So if there's, again, that critical mass of students that want to say, for example, they really want European history, then we will offer here European history, given if we had a qualified teacher as well.
Thank you. Follow-up, Chair Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. So something, when you talk compulsory courses, Director Daley, would something like religion be included in that as a possible offering, you know, as something that would be considered, you know, top of mind as far as availability or offering a course like that?
Director Daley?
Sorry about that. I'll be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we offer religion for credit courses in summer school. Maybe I'll ask Superintendent Del Sorto if that's on the course offering. We may offer the world religions in summer school. I'm not a hundred percent sure if we do offer the other ones. So I'll ask Superintendent Del Sorto.
Thank you, Director Daley. I would have to get back to you, trustee Agnew. I'll connect with Dr. Montanari, and I'll ask him particularly how we go about by looking at what courses to offer, and I'll ask specifically about the religion course.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you for that.
Moving down the speakers list, we have trustee Master Yamar, trustee O'Brien, trustee Carabella, trustee Guzzo, trustee Master Yamar, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to add on to trustee Agnew, I was a summer school religion student, so they are offered for grade eleven. I know that, and I know grade ten as well because I took it in grade ten and grade eleven. My question is regarding shisham and their field trips. Are those still allowed because those are not overnight?
Maybe it's a, Director Daley, Director Daley, go ahead.
Yeah, day trips are allowed, yes.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I have a follow-up regarding the e-learning courses. I know this is kind of a newer idea, and a lot of students are confused about it because it applies to some and some not. I heard that there is a way through like paperwork that they can be exempt from for it, but I think a lot of people are thinking that anyone can do that. So what are the restrictions to that?
Director Daley?
Maybe I'll ask either Superintendent Kroll or Superintendent Del Sorto to talk about the opt-out option. That information did go to, I believe, to all parents of students, to high school students, but I'll turn it over to either Yamar or Jeff to address it.
Thank you, Director Daley. Yes, you can opt out. There is an opt-out process. So the ministry does recognize that all students learn differently, so that if, for example, a student doesn't learn effectively and won't achieve to their potential, they can opt out at any time. So, and at the same time, if they want to opt back in, they can opt back in. So there is an opt-out process that will be communicated to the schools, and I'll be working with a number of people to put a process together, and then I'll communicate with the schools.
Thank you. Moving down the speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien up next. Trustee O'Brien, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and Director Daley. Thank you again for your hard work navigating us through the pandemic. Thankless job. A lot of people to make happy. Thanks for all your hard work. Director Daley, I do hear that the ministry has given kind of a free pass for students from the Ukraine. Will we be seeing any of them here in Halden?
Director Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So we have, as of last week, and I'll go to my notes here in a minute, we have, I think, across the system enrolled seven or eight students who have come recently from Ukraine. We're anticipating, I think our area of the province is anticipating more families and kids arriving. But right now, it's been fairly small numbers, and I can somebody's just confirmed with me, it's seven students so far.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up? Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella? You're the floor.
Mr. Chair, so I have, it's regarding the secondary virtual learning option. And I'm trying, well, I wanted to acknowledge that it says here that students will be required to attend in person for some components of assessments and evaluation. And I see the word exams, so that's exciting. And the, so that would mean that the students would be coming to their local school to do those?
Director Daley? It could be either to their local school or to a central municipal location. We haven't quite determined that yet. Trustee Carabella?
Okay. Yes, the second bullet down about virtual students will not be participating in in-person school clubs or teams. So I'm wondering why that decision was made, or why?
Director Daley? Because the model that we're suggesting for next year, it's a separate entity. It's a separate school, much like St. Clair, it's a separate school.
Thank you, trustee. Guzzo, you're up next.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to add on to the virtual learning, e-learning piece because I myself am confused, and I've had some questions about it, so I'm hoping I can get some clarity. Now, I know that the forms that are due, they're due tomorrow for students to opt out. Now, but it says that it's a requirement for graduation, so I've tried to read through the, I guess it's a PPM in regards to, regarding, not in regards to, regarding the need to have, and it's required for graduation. So if we opt out, as parents, well, students opt out, what replaces it then? Is there going to be something that comes back and says you don't meet your graduation expectations? Like, I know it's all new to everybody, but do you have any insight on that?
Director Daley?
Yeah, the opt-out option does not eliminate the student's ability to graduate currently, and I don't anticipate it changing. Students need two e-learning credits to graduate. That's the ministry direction unless they opt out. Again, maybe I'll ask Superintendent Del Sorto if we've landed on how that would be reflected, or Superintendent Kroll, how it would be reflected on, I guess it would be on the student transcript.
Thank you, Director Daley and trustee Guzzo. So the opt-out process really is that it's an opportunity for students and parents to work with the guidance counselor when they're thinking about pathway planning, and what's the best course of action to really start to mark where a student can achieve to their full potential. So if a student does not learn through an e-learning module or e-learning mode, then they can opt out without any repercussions to their graduation. So what that will look like is on their report card, as well as on their accumulated credit count, there will be different toggles, much like it would say the Ontario literacy test was passed, they have their volunteer hours. So if students opt out, there will be opt-out toggle there, and that part will be highlighted as if they didn't participate and will go forward. Having said that, a student can take at least one e-learning course and still opt out. So there's a lot of choice here for students, so they don't have to stay locked and keyed in a particular decision they make. And again, the whole thing that we want to stress is they can opt back in at any time. So if they see that they do enjoy e-learning and they want to continue, then they can opt back in. And all they have to do is let us know that they're And all they have to do is let us know that they're opting back in.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, you have a follow-up question?
I, I do. Thank you. And um, so would a summer school asynchronous course count as an e-learning? And, or like, is that kind of the guideline for what those e-learning courses are? Like, course selection, I guess?
Uh, so a summer school credit does count as an e-learning credit. So um, so for our, for example, for our current grade 10 students, they're going to be awarded, I guess, the equivalency of an e-learning credit because of the amount of time they spent on remote last year. So they would still have, um, they'd still need one more e-learning credit or um, complete the exemption process. But if they took an e-learning credit in summer school, that would fulfill that requirement. Thank, thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Uh, Trustee Master Yamar, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so my first question would be regarding, I know a couple of students are able to take e-learning courses through different boards or to like private schools and things like that. Would those still count towards those e-learning courses?
Director Daly? Uh, I can't really speak to uh, with certainty about private um, schools. Uh, I'm assuming, I shouldn't make an assumption. Um, i- if they uh, complete an e-learning credit with uh, another school board, that would count as an e-learning credit. So for example, if a student took an e-learning credit in summer school in Holton District, it, it, it would, it would go on, on their transcript as an e-learning credit. Thank you. Do you, do you have a follow up?
I do have a follow, sorry, I was just gotten a lot of questions about this, so I want to make sure that I hit them. Um, so for the e-learning courses, let's say it's during day school because they weren't able to take it in summer school for some reason. Would that mean that they would have to go back home and do that course at home? Or are they able to stay in the library? Because I know for instance, like people who have spares in the mornings or things like that are not allowed in the library for safety reasons because they're not taking into attendance. So I was just wondering about that.
Director Daly? Yeah, the, the, really the intent is that students are able to do that e-learning credit at school. So we provide space for them. Thank you. Uh, and finally, we have Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a brief question, just for clarity, the consent forms for parents for the uh, school-based vaccinations, are those going to be electronic or written paper form or both?
Not sure, but Director Daly? Um, maybe you're gonna have to ask for Superintendent uh, Bakich. I'm, I'm hearing from around the table, it is paper, but I'll give Superintendent Bakich says as well.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Director Daly and Trustee Carabella, it's both. They are available electronically and uh, paper copy.
Thank you. Question there?
No, I would assume then the child would have to present the form or the school would have the copy if they have consent or not. So that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see no more questions here. So we shall now move on down to the next order of business, which is the item 10.3. Thank you, Director Daly, for the updates uh, and a lot happening there. Uh, item 10.3, 2022 to 23 budget estimates, release of the 2022, 2023 trends for student needs. Superintendent Loft, give us your snapshot of this. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, please find attached the 2022, 2023 budget estimate release of the GSN uh, report. Highlights from the report include the following. The COVID funding for remote learning continues to be offered for 2223. Uh, our allocation is the same as it was for this current school year or 2122 of about 5.4 million. Uh, this is to be utilized to support elementary and secondary remote learning. Uh, additional funding has also been allocated through the GSNs to support broadband network operations. So our allocation uh, for HCDSP is about 700,000 for this. So that's exciting news. Um, the support for students uh, and the system priorities funding that was part of the previous collective agreement has also been continued for one year. Um, there's also a significant amount of additional funding for mental health. Uh, there's funds for supporting student uh, mental health. There's about 350,000, which was been transferred from the uh, Priorities and Partnership Fund to the GSN to support local spec ed or special education priorities and well-being and mental health. And about 175,000 in funding is to support evidence-based mental health programs and resources to support student resilience and mental health well-being. Now, we also talked about this in the, at a past meeting. We've received about 3.2 million for tutoring supports. So half of this, or 1.6 million is to be used by the end of August of this year, 2022. And the remaining 1.6 million will be carried forward into 2223 or the, or the next budget year. Now, here's an amount that's actually substantially been reduced for 2223. Our temporary accommodation funding is down about $700,000 from the current year. Uh, just to explain how this funding works, the ministry has a finite amount of funding for this, so it's about $40 million that is allocated across the province based on an average usage over three years. Now, with the number of boards requiring temporary space relating to COVID-19, more boards have requested funding and access to this funding, thus reducing our allocation. Uh, and finally, there's also been some adjustments to the special ed uh, benchmarks and average daily enrollment allocations that should have a positive impact to the board uh, for the 2223 uh, revenue or for 2223 revenue. Uh, any questions, uh, Mr. Chair? We'd be, Adam Cross, our senior manager of financial services is here as well with me.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for your presentations. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. As you trust your Brian, your hand is up there. Was it for the previous thing? I might, I missed you.
No, it is for this, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Trustee O'Brien, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairs. Um, super. We're still getting um, 2,557. So I'm wondering, um, can that be used for Katiri, Katika with the, and the accommodation issues there?
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Trustee O'Brien, I missed the first part. It was kind of coming in and coming out, so I didn't quite hear the question, to be honest. I heard St. Katiri at the end, but that's pretty much all I got.
Are we using the temporary accommodation allocation for Katiri?
We will be using, that's part of it as well. So that would be part of our, for this current year. So we're right now at the old uh, Pearson High School uh, in Burlington. So that is eligible to be used for that. We can use that for it if, if we have enough funding for it in our allocation. So it would be included, I guess, as part of our three-year average. Trustee O'Brien?
But it, but it is lower than last year, correct?
It is lower than last year, that's right. So our allocation is lower than last year, so.
Thank you. Do you have a follow up, Trustee O'Brien?
I do, but I'll get back in the queue.
Uh, there's no queue. You can jump right back in.
Um, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, Loft, the um, um, human rights and equity advisors estimate allocation of 170,000 go towards our new equity positions that we voted for on March 22nd.
Superintendent Loft?
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair, a hundred percent of that would be going towards uh, those positions, including the uh, the salary of Seda right now or our current um, senior manager of human rights equity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. I see no more questions, so uh, next, which is 10, 2022, 23 budget consult, consultation survey results. Dr. Colimore, Dr. Colimore, you're the floor.
Hi, through you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of this report is to provide the Board of Trustees with a summary of the feedback received from our 2022, 23 budget consultation survey. As you're aware, this survey is a component of the board's annual budget process and this year our stakeholders were invited to participate in a survey online from March 3rd to 25th. Overall, we heard from 1,778 respondents. Most of those were parents or guardians and most of them said that they were part of the elementary panel. Items on this year's survey asked respondents about their opinion about the importance of various areas of interest and/or priority areas for our board. They asked respondents about the preferred program timing and about general areas for savings and/or efficiencies. The full survey report is attached for you in your package. Uh, some highlights of the survey findings in terms of special education initiatives, 79% of respondents indicated that the area with the highest rating uh, as very important was early literacy and numeracy intervention programs. Uh, almost a half of the respondents rated our faith formation initiatives as very important to continue. And no, not surprisingly, maintaining safe and welcoming schools and workplaces was very important to our respondents. With the top component being rated as very important was heat ventilation and air conditioning. And this was true across all panels and CC. Um, Zoe and I are both here tonight to answer any questions about the survey specifically. And then, of course, my colleagues are also here to answer any questions that you may have about budget for the various priority areas mentioned throughout the survey. Thanks.
Colimore, for, for your uh, report. Uh, trustees, do we have any questions? Very well, we do not have questions. So thank you so much for presenting your survey, bu- budget consultation survey results. Uh, really appreciated. And uh, we shall now move on to the next uh, item on our agenda, which is construction report. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we have the construction report for the Milton Number 10 Catholic Elementary School. Uh, construction on the site is progressing well. Uh, you can see from the photo that the roof is nearly complete. Uh, flooring and painting are underway. Uh, utilities are going in uh, and we have millwork installed starting in the school as well. Uh, over the next month, we'll continue with the interior finishes, paint, flooring, uh, more millwork, doors, uh, drywall and ceilings going in. Uh, and we're on pace to wrap up near the end of May, uh, which should give us occupancy and deficiency cleanup uh, early June and uh, and have it ready to go for September, um, when we expect students in the building. So happy to answer any, any questions that trustees may have on the Milton Number 10 building construction.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, as trying to make sense. Uh, trustees, uh, do we, uh, do we have any questions for Superintendent Merrick? Seeing none, Superintendent Merrick, thank you for presenting your construction uh, report and it, which has been uh, missed for a long time. Thank you so much. Moving on to the next item on the, on our agenda is the item 10.6, land purchases. Superintendent Loft, could you present uh, your?
So, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, please find the request to report relating to the motion adopted at the March 22nd, 2022 regular board meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Uh, the floor to these four questions on item 10.6. Seeing none. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting your report. Much appreciated. Uh, moving on to the next order of business, which is miscellaneous information. Uh, so this is something uh, which uh, we are, something new which we are going to try tonight in discussing with Vice Chair Agnew. We thought it would be a great idea for trustees uh, to have the opportunity to speak and to recognize schools and school students' achievements in your local areas. Uh, and if this works well, we could make this a regular feature at our meetings. So trustees, uh, you'll have a minute to present your happy, positive stories. So I'll give an opportunity here to trustees, if you'd like to, to speak about uh, achievements in your areas, please put your hand up and um, I'll give you the floor. Trustee O'Brien, Trustee O'Brien, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I um, got your email on today and I decided I would just center on one school. Um, and that is Ascension uh, public school, sorry, Ascension, elementary school. And this comes right from the school. Um, I asked them for some kind of update and this is right from one of their staff. So I've just read it to you from Ascension. Um, the essential skills students organized a Lenten food drive with the goal of exceeding our Thanksgiving record of 1,263 non-perishable items collected. The students created and updated a weekly letterboard of items donated by class. By Easter weekend, the Ascension School community brought in a total of 1,562 items to donate to St. Vincent de Paul. The essential skills students offered a prize to the two classes who brought in the most donations and organized an exciting Easter egg hunt in the library. We are so proud of the Catholic leadership demonstrated, demonstrated by the students and the generosity of the entire school community. Um, we have a three-week Jump Rope for Heart campaign currently underway, raising money for the Heart and Stroke Foundation. We had a one-of-a-kind virtual kickoff assembly created by the staff and after having raised almost $4,000 in the first 10 days of the campaign. The Jump Rope for Heart event will take place on Friday, April 29th. Students are excited for the upcoming Pie-in-the-Face Challenge during Catholic Education Week as they are earning tickets for every $5 raised to choose which staff member they would like to pie in the face. This will be our first in-person assembly since COVID protocols have permitted us to gather and we're looking forward to sharing in-togetherness and highlighting in our school spirit. We've also have a running club, this um, Ascension Hustlers Heroes with a 17-staff coaches, coaches volunteering, practicing three times a week. Um, we are gearing up for the Run for Lighthouse to support grieving families. Students are trained to complete a 5K run and many are raising funds to support the lighthouse as well. This initiative also supports student mental health as they check in and out with a colored-coded sticker on our chair to describe their mood before and after our practices. Here at Ascension, we pride ourselves on undertaking initiatives that boost our school community here at home while also serving others in the greater community at large. It's thanks again for reaching out to us. And that is by the staff member, Ms. Megan Arroyo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. So exciting, very good, uh, excellent, uh, happy story there. Uh, moving down, we have Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, would you like to, you have a happy story?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm glad that uh, Trustee O'Brien went first and destroyed your one-minute uh, time limit barrier. So I couldn't order a cup of coffee in one minute, so buckle in, folks.
You get the pie in the face.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bumpy ride. Uh, Trustee O'Hern Schirrata is going to uh, to present with me uh, as she uh, and yourself and, and myself were invited to tour the Thomas Burton Center in Milton by Principal uh, uh, Montanari. Uh, it was a, it's a beautiful facility. It's a new facility, um, very spacious, very bright, lots of windows. Um, the real value in our, in our tour was getting to um, get an in-depth uh, overview of the Thomas Burton Center and the important programs that, that they do, which really was enlightening for, for most of us. Um, there's almost 10,000 students that uh, use the services of Thomas Burton and we talked a lot about summer school and element, uh, both secondary and elementary and, and they're involved with the Thomas Burton Center. Um, and you know, the Trustee O'Hern Schirrata is going to talk about the, the other part of what they do, which is um, support and welcome, that can't be a minute already. Support in the, in the Welcome Center. Uh, so there are credit courses, there's non-credit courses. Um, one of the messages that Principal Montanari really hit home with us is that they're really changing people's lives. It's not a matter of getting one credit, so you get a certificate on a wall. People are getting that one credit that gets them a certificate, gets somebody a better life, allows them to, to progress in their job or to get a better job. And he really is, uh, he's going to invite all trustees to tour the different areas and I, I can't do justice to the passion that he has for the work they do. But uh, please take advantage when he invites you, um, because it really is um, a worthwhile tour. Uh, Trustee O'Hern Schirrata, would you like to?
Yeah, go ahead, Trustee O'Hern Schirrata.
Thank you for that, uh, Trustee Murphy. And I, and I just want to underline, and maybe it's just me, but what I left with that was how much I didn't know uh, that went on at the Thomas Burton Center. So they also have a Welcome Center and I'm not going to do it justice. You know, one of the things that we talked about was maybe them coming and delegating to the board so they could, they could do it justice and explain and go through all the programs for our stakeholders that are wa- watching our trustees, et cetera, et cetera. Because there is so much here, there are many layers and so value added. So they have settlement programs, um, they have a Welcome Center, Community Connections, uh, Newcomer Youth Program, Short-Term Counseling and Interpretation and Translations. It is such a fulsome program. It's unbelievable. And I was so proud and pleased that uh, we were able to attend and be given the tour. So really, that's all I want to say. Um, very fulsome. Um, and like um, Trustee Murphy said, uh, meaningful work. I left there thinking, what real meaningful work is going on? They're changing lives. Um, so a really awesome program. I just really wanted to express my um, my pleasure with that and um, that's it. So really awesome program. I just really wanted to express my my pleasure with that and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy, Trustee O'Hern Chirrata, that was an amazing visit. Moving down the speakers list, we have Vice Chair Agnew and Trustee Carabella. Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. I actually wanted to comment on the enthusiasm and participation that I saw from our schools across Burlington, our elementary schools with respect to STEAM Week. I was really, really encouraged by the ideas that were being shared, again, the participation. You know, I can't imagine it's always easy to engage some students, perhaps, in the idea behind STEAM. For some students, you know, it might be difficult concepts to grasp. It may always, it may not always be the easiest for them to do, but I was really, really impressed with, again, the different ideas that came forward, the, you could tell the enthusiasm, the teachers were excited, the projects that are being displayed by the schools were absolutely inspiring and I love it. I love that they embraced that idea. They celebrated it and I think that everybody benefited from that week. So it was wonderful to see that participation consistently across all of those schools.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, nice story there. And Trustee Carabella, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just saw the notice quite late today, so I just found some information that's happening that I think should get attention. It was published at Loyola School, so it was an announcement and it's but it's about your schools in Milton, so there is going to be an inaugural amazing opportunity for a Skills Trade Career Fair on Saturday, April thirtieth, and it's going to be held at Saint Francis Xavier. I thought that was really awesome. And it seems that a lot of schools here are preparing for Catholic Education Week coming up with preparing for their activities. And just to say that may, to everyone mark their calendar for Thursday, May the fifth, which will be a board-wide liturgy with Bishop Crosby.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Amazing stories. I have one story which I'll quickly share. And I just want to give a big shout out to some of our HCDSB schoolgirls from grade eight and nine who are in Halton S Elite U fifteen team who are headed to the Ontario Provincial Championships after going twelve-one this season in the Ontario Basketball Association Games and sanctioned tournaments. These girls have been playing in the same team since twenty sixteen with the Milton Stags and the, at the permission of the parents to to give their first name. And so one student is from Georgetown, Courtney Christa King, Ella from Saint Benedict in Milton, and Jazzy from Saint Peters in Milton. It's a team. We have many members in the team and all the team is from Halton, the other girls and the public schools. So please join me in congratulating our students in this achievement. It's a big achievement for our girls and so and congratulations to our entire team of athletes and wish them all the best in winning the championship. So that was amazing and thank you all trustees for bringing stories. I'm sorry I was a little late today. There's too many things happening, so we move on to the next order of business now, and that's item number twelve, correspondences. It's in your package. We have ministry memos from Ms. Lorenko, G. Thomas, the Equity Network, and Halton Parents for Change. The correspondence is in your package. Moving on to the next order of business, which is open question period. Director Daly, do we have any questions? Thank you. We do not have any questions submitted today. In camera, we do have to move into camera and thank you all for the great meeting, all of yous. And we need to move into camera. We need a motion to move into camera.
Murphy, I'll move it.
Trustee Murphy, I need a second, please.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ohan, Chirrata. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you. Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. We shall now move back into camera. We'll exit this meeting and then we'll come back, use the in-camera link. Thank you to all of yous. Good night.
Hi everybody, we are back in the open session of the board meeting. Vice Chair Agnew, would you please read the motions adopted in camera?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So the motions that were adopted in camera, a motion regarding property was adopted in camera. And this motion was also adopted in camera. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept with regret the resignation of the Director of Education, Pat Daly, effective July the first, sorry, July the 31st, 2022.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Could you read the information received in camera?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Information received in camera will be a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. We shall now move on to the next order of business, that's adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Ask for a mover, please.
I will move, Mr. Chair.
By trustee Murphy and seconded by trustee DeRosa. All in favor? Anybody? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. I shall now ask trustee Murphy to lead us in the closing prayer, trustee Murphy.
Please join me in a sign of our faith as we recite the resurrection prayer in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Oh risen Lord, the way, the truth, and the life, make us faithful followers of the Spirit of your resurrection. Grant that we may be inwardly renewed, dying to ourselves in order that you may live in us. May our lives serve as signs of the transforming power of your love. Use us as your instruments for the renewal of society, bringing your life and love to all and leading them to your church. This we ask of you, Lord Jesus, living and reigning with the Father in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you everybody for this wonderful, wonderful meeting. Good night and see you at the next board meeting. Thank you.